Before the meeting commences this evening, we have to adopt a special agenda item. And it's the readoption of emergency ordinance to ensure certain, the continuation of county government response to the COVID disaster. This puts us in compliance on the physical assembly caused by COVID-19, the public health crisis, which has made it difficult or impossible for boards of supervisors just to safely physically assemble or conduct meetings and hold public hearings in accordance with ordinary procedures. As a result, the Board of Supervisors is going to adopt an emergency ordinance as it did at its March 24, 2020 meeting, instituting emergency procedures to ensure the continuity of government. A copy of the ordinance which was prepared by the county attorney is attached and it can be seen online. So I will take a motion to adopt the special agenda item for the adoption of emergency ordinance to ensure continuity of the county government response to the COVID-19 disaster.
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it, motion carries. We will now move into the regular meeting. I call the Caroline County Board of Supervisors meeting to order for August 11, 2020. First on the agenda is the invocation. Mrs. Long, can we all please stand?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for bringing us all here together tonight. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom in making wise decisions for the county and ask that you bless us all, watch over everyone as we return home this evening. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please re standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening board comments, Mr. Forehand?
None, sir.
Mr. Black?
I'll make up for his. I've got several. First of all, I guess probably at the middle of June after the incident up in Minnesota, Ms. Thomas invited all of the supervisors to come to, I guess you would call it, racial discussion meetings.
That was me that made the invitation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas was the one who brought that. The first one started on June 16, which I was not able to attend because it was my girlfriend's birthday. And then the following one, I was also not able to attend because I was on vacation. I have been able to attend the meeting since. I think there's been some good discussion dialogue. I don't always agree with what's going on, but there's been some sort of misconception that these are secret meetings. They are not secret meetings. There's been ministers, community leaders, Sheriff Lipp has been there, YMCA leaders. So as a Board of Supervisors, we can meet if we are not discussing county business. We have every right to do so. So I just want to clarify, so that way we're not accused of having secret meetings, I just want to clarify that we have not discussed county business. Mr. Forehand, have we discussed county business?
When we've gotten close, we've stopped and redirected.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood, have we discussed county business? Mr. Seeley, have we discussed county business?
Mr. Black, I refrained from going at some point because the attorney informed me that I was talking way too much at those meetings and we should be there to listen and not participate. So I stopped going after the third one.
Okay, but we've all been there. Ms. Long, did we discuss county business?
All the meetings I attended, no.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify before that gets out there in any. Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry, have we discussed county business?
That's okay. No, no, and when it happened, I stopped.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record. The second thing is we have, there was a decision made by the school board last week. And after I heard about it, I was a little taken back. And I called Dr. Calverick. And Dr. Calverick and I, I don't know, she's here somewhere. Dr. Calverick and I talked on the phone for a good half hour, 45 minutes. I may have interrupted with dinner plans a little bit. She was very polite. I thought it was a, I thought it was a very, very good conversation. So I want to get back to that in a minute. I'm going to return to that. Mr. Thomas, we have coming up later in our board packet, a discussion about possible Comcast expansion. Mr. Thomas reached out to Comcast. There were some citizens on the western side of the county that were upset that the Board of Supervisors had put together a VATTI grant that covered the eastern part of the county, but not the western, the rural areas in the western. And the reason why I think that was unanimous vote for that is because Comcast would not engage us. That has to be with a private company. And so the reason why my vote was yes, even though some of my constituents were upset, was because I'm not going to tell the residents on the eastern part of the county they can't have high-speed internet just because the western side can't. It takes a private company to work on that VATTI grant, and we have just engaged, Mr. Thomas has just engaged Comcast for that. So we have on the board meeting tonight, a discussion about Jericho Road. And I agree 100% if Comcast is able to do this, some expansion, I agree 100% in Jericho Road needs to be done. But I also want to tell the Board of Supervisors and other members that I cannot support anything that does not include other areas like Anderson Mill Road. Fourthly, and we'll get back to it, Mr. Sadler, Mr. Cully, I don't know where Mr. Cully is. Mr. Cully, we had, at the George Washington Regional Commission, we had discussed about the idea of a regional broadband committee made up of one member from Stafford, Spotsylvania. And I really, really believe that that member, and I know I don't want to take up too much of staff time, but I really believe that member has to be someone from our staff who is kind of tech savvy. So if we could, if the board is okay, I would like Mr. Sadler to be able to attend those meetings because it has to be, or Mr. Farmer, just because the fact that it should be someone who knows about these grants and who knows about the technology behind it.
Wait a minute, Mr. Black, Mr. Cully, we can wait, but while he's fresh.
On two things, can I make one correction to the Comcast statement? We have reached out numerous times and had numerous meetings with Marie Schuler. We asked before the last VATTI grant round, and would they come back because they didn't have enough time a year ago because we wanted to expand Comcast? And, oh, I got to go back to the engineers, and we never heard anything. So it's not that people, staff-wise and board members, haven't reached out to Comcast before.
Right, yeah.
So I'm not detracting from the effort now, but it's not that the efforts haven't been made before.
Right, I agree.
So the way you said it sort of sounded like this was the first time we've gotten Comcast at the table.
No, I'm sorry, no.
We've had them at the table, but then we never moved them anywhere. Second, I would recommend if it's, those of you that are on the broadband committee, maybe there's some expertise on the broadband committee that could go to the George Washington Broadband Regional Meeting. I don't believe with the staff time that we're taking up, David Sadler's main responsibility is to keep our network safe from intrusions and to keep our own infrastructure running. And we're struggling getting that done just doing this VATTI broadband grant currently. So I would respectfully request that if there's maybe somebody on there, y'all know those folks that are on there, there's plenty of expertise on the local broadband committee, maybe somebody could do that to take that off of having to be a David responsibility. So.
That's all I have. Do you know?
We'll ask David which one is best.
Okay.
They're all well qualified. And some of them are retired.
Okay. And then my last comment is, I was listening to the school board meeting last night, the closing board comments, and there's some things that I tend to be, I feel like I tend to be kind of moderate. And I think there's stuff on our end that we need to work on. I think that it would be nice, Mr. Parton, Mr. Cully, if on these, the money that we're getting from the federal government, the CARES Act, if there was a school representative on that, I really believe that might, because at the last meeting, we were trying to rush to figure out, and we were dealing with millions of dollars, and we literally were trying to figure that out at the very end. So if we could get a representative from the schools on that, I would greatly appreciate it. As far as the two-on-twos, Mr. Seeley has put that out there. I'm not a big fan, when I was a chair, I was not, I'm not a big fan of the two-on-twos. And the reason why I'm not a big fan is because I think stuff comes out of there misconstrued. I think the schools had sent us an email in regards to maybe meeting quarterly, which I had talked to the superintendent as well. I'm fine with that. It's public, it's open, it's on camera, and there's nothing can be misconstrued that's come out of there from a two-on-two. Finally, the one thing that disturbed me last night was the chairman, the chairwoman's final remarks about the pandemic. There's stuff from both ends that needs to be fixed, and we're certainly guilty of some stuff. Communication probably could improve. However, our chairman has reached out and said, look, the state is meeting, and there's going to be major cuts made. That's obvious. I'm on phone calls with the governor twice a month, and there's major cuts coming. And we have $700,000 of the school's money, we know that. But to meet, to me, before the cuts are made about that money would be a fool's errand. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one comment, and it relates to internet service. I'm disappointed with our capital improvement program and how we're continuing to spend money. We have children who don't have internet access. We have communities without internet access, and people are working from home. I don't think any money for capital improvement should be spent until we try to expand internet throughout all of the county. We have money for sheriff's cars, for buses, for a plethora of things, including public utilities, but the critical piece should be making sure that every child, every household, particularly now during this pandemic, has the opportunity to have some type of internet service. And we shouldn't be spending millions of dollars on other projects without doing everything that we can to ensure that we're trying to expand our internet service. That's my only comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Mrs. Long?
Yes, thank you. Piggybacking a little bit on Mr. Black's comment about the school, I do, I would request of staff and the chair in that we consider thinking somewhere around the third week in September, when maybe we'll have some figures back, scheduling a joint meeting between the school board and us, maybe the third week in September, if we could sort of pencil that in and plan toward that so we can get discussing things. Hopefully, the full audit will be back, but at least we should have some basic numbers. And the state's got to give us some figures by then. I don't know how much longer they can hold off. Secondly, I just wanted to remind parents or let parents know, if you have not heard, that our wonderful Caroline's Promise is doing a back-to-school drive-through at Caroline Middle School on August 22nd, from 10 to 12, or until they run out, you know, run out of things if it turn out as heavy, may not make it quite to 12th, but we hope to have a good turnout. There will be no getting out of cars. You will drive through, the sheriff's department's going to help with traffic, and you'll drive through to each of the sponsors' tables, and they'll give you the supplies through the windows. Everybody must wear a mask, but there'll be book packs and papers and the general things that Caroline Promise does. And we want to thank those businesses that sponsored this and all those who are volunteering their time for that back-to-school drive-through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to take the Mr. Black route. I have a few. First of all, I do want to thank, and it's not the county, but the schools for their summer meals program. I think that's been a great program, and a lot of people in a rural county like this, you know, for some of our kids, that may be their only meal. So I really do appreciate that from the schools. And I support whatever school decision you're making as far as return to school because it's a tough choice, nobody's got the answer. So just wanted to say I support that. And I want to thank Chief Loftus and the staff for opening up the cooling station. We used the gym as a cooling station last week, week before last, when it was 100 degrees. And a citizen actually posted something on Facebook that I happened to see, and the question was, is the county going to open up a cooling station? And I called Chief Loftus, and Chief Loftus said, of course, we can do that, and he made all the arrangements. So that's really how government's supposed to work. You ask folks to do, or you ask your representatives to do things, they do them. In this case, we actually did something quick and fast, so I did appreciate that. On another note, I am asking staff to initiate a stop-work order at the Brookwoods subdivision. Brookwoods has, their contractors have cut phone lines, they've reduced the water pressure, they've blocked traffic, there's been weekend construction noise, and various other insensities to the existing residents. So I'm asking staff, I'm working with them to create a stop-work order so they'll build no more houses until they decide that they can work with the existing residents. I was going to save my Comcast stuff for later on, but since Mr. Cully mentioned it, Marie Schuler, who was our Comcast rep, apparently left, I think she retired last year, and surprisingly, it's funny the way the world works, but I just happened to be at a banquet last year. It happened to be the NAACP State Banquet. I was a guest, and I got to meet the Comcast Community Outreach Person who later on put me in touch with their new person. I don't think we would have ever found that person because they've never really reached out to us like that. So I did make contact. Mr. Cully and Mr. Parton, I think, and Mr. Sadler had a conversation with the new rep. I talked to the new rep last week and told him that we may be using COVID money to help the expansion. We all know web-based services, the internet, are subject to private companies. The county by federal law is really prohibited from making its own internet system. So we have to work with them. And I told them that we may have some money to help them with the expansion, and I believe we're going to talk about having some money later, but we're not going to tell them exactly how much in public because you're going to whisper that in my ear. Thank you. And the handouts that you have, the little blue packets, are from Dent quest. That's the company that gave money, that's your first agenda item. They gave 500 of those, I believe, to Caroline's Promise and to Parks and Rec. So, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I just have a few, and I'll lead off with the internet because we've been meeting with the internet committee on a regular basis, and most folks don't realize this, but we've done this all by phone, and Mr. Thomas has led this effort. And we've talked about internet countywide and coming up with a countywide initiative and a plan. There are a number of methods that could be used to bring internet. For those of you that are underserved and on REC, it would be very beneficial if you would actually send them a letter, go online, there's a site set up to actually send them a letter, that you would be interested, because the co-op is now looking at actually using their infrastructure to provide the backbone that the county would need to provide internet to the folks that don't have it that are on Rappahannock Electric. So for those that haven't seen that online, please consider doing that. In terms of the state budget, I just want to remind everybody that the new budget went into effect one July. The longer we go without the governor's numbers, the deeper the cuts are. So for those of us that are sitting here looking at dollars and cents, the sooner we know, the easier, it's easier to cut your budget one quarter through the year than halfway through the year. And as Mr. Black said, there are cuts coming, we don't know what those are, but we need to know so that we can all operate efficiently and actually get things accomplished without any, with the least amount of pain. And lastly, I just want to bring attention to, and I'm sure everybody on county staff and on the board knows, that Kevin Whiteman was driving down 301 on Tuesday, the day of the tropical depression coming over, and a tree hit his vehicle. And on his, after he saw that the tree hit his vehicle, he climbed out the back passenger window, at which time a tree hit him and knocked him to the ground. And as he laid there, he saw a third tree coming down, and he rolled out of the way and jumped up and looked around to see what else was coming. But I will say that he has done a tremendous amount for everybody in the county. He went home, got his own truck, and went back to work that same day. But I think anybody that sees Kevin, if you don't know his name, you've probably seen him around, and is a fabulous county employee, and I just want everybody to wish him well. And I'm glad that he was not seriously hurt in this accident. And it just goes to show that he was just at the wrong place at the wrong time, and three trees falling simultaneously is just unbelievable. But I'm thankful for that he is fine and hoping many more years working for the county. Those are my closing, my opening board comments. We will move on to amendments to the agenda.
Could I ask for one, Mr. Chairman? We all got an email, I guess, from the schools regarding their end-of-year budget. I asked Mr. Cully if he could figure out what, and, well, I guess I should explain. The school's end-of-year budget had 2-point-some million dollars, and they made some expenditures, and they ended up with 1.6 million dollars or something like that. And I wanted Mr. Cully to kind of explain to the board what happened, and just so we could be aware of that. So that's, that's all I had.
So it's just a Mr. Cully explanation?
Yeah. If Mr. Cully could explain it to us, and then we'd make sure we understand.
Okay.
Is that something we could do somewhere?
Can we do that last under informational items? So we'll do that as agenda item 14?
Oh, my gosh, 15.
15?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind amending that? Because the only, in that email from the schools, the only thing that I really wanted to discuss with them was the same issue, but I'd like to hear an answer from them because at the May meeting, both you and I, if you go back and look at the May meeting, both you and I had asked them, what was the savings from COVID? And the response was not much. And then we heard about what happened at the meeting last week, which is great, but I'd like to know, I'd like to know the answer from them as to why that happened.
Does Mr. Cully have the answer? Maybe we should do it earlier, Jeff, just to see if Cully can answer it, then we'll let it go. That's fine.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. I'm waiting. Mr. Underwood seems to have, I think it's too soon to know that answer personally, since we just got it on Thursday, and today's Tuesday, and the auditor's not been here. I would just as soon have waited on all, unless Mr. Cully has an explanation. That's why I was just going to make it informational on 15.
I think he was trying to, he was trying to find out. I think-
Mr. Black, can we just do it informational on 15, and then when we get together with the school board, we'll have the opportunity to really dig into that?
To me, and we can vote this to me, I mean, since they're here, I just want that one item, the return to learn plan, I mean, they've got that covered, I've seen that a million times. I just, I would just like a brief from the superintendent or someone, one of the board members, how that happened on that number three.
That wasn't his agenda item addition. If you want something else, then you should make a second amendment request.
Amendment to the agenda.
But you asked for a specific-
I asked for Mr. Cully to basically explain the same thing.
Right, but if he wants it elsewhere, then that's up to him to do the amendment.
Okay. I'd like to make an amendment to Mr.-
Mine would be handled by you. Mine would be handled by you. So if you want to go ahead and make a motion, that's fine. We'll, you know, we'll let the schools or Mr. Cully answer. I really don't care who answers. I'm finding 1.6 million dollars. I want to know where it came from. I don't care who tells me. That's all I care about.
I just think it's premature to do the schools this evening.
Well, if Mr. Cully can tell me where that 1.6 million dollars came from, I want to know about it.
And that's why I said he could do it under informational item, which would be right up, right up where it should be.
Let's make him a presentation, let him do two, and then we go from there. That's, you know, I really don't have the patience to wait for 1.6 million dollars.
Well, let me, let's do this. Mr. Thomas has a motion, has a, do you have, you want to make that a motion?
I will make a motion to see if we can ask Mr. Cully to explain the unencumbered, or the unexpended funds from the school, which were 1.6 million dollars or so.
We never had to make a motion to amend the agenda, simply your request to the chairman to amend the agenda.
I was just trying to make it-
But there seems to be some dissension, so I'm just trying to get this done expeditiously so we don't battle.
Well, let's add it as a presentation item. We'll ask Mr. Cully if he can do it, and that's it.
Okay.
All right?
Presentation, is that fine, Mr. Black?
Do we have a motion?
Then if you're not satisfied, we'll do something else.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Well, I've learned to be specific. I'm going to ask that we identify how the unencumbered balance at the school system came about. That's it.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote nay, simply because the fact that I want to hear it from the horse's mouth.
I left it as open as possible.
I know, but I'm still voting nay unless they're, unless they're going to tell me.
As open as possible. It's find the answer.
Okay. Let's call the roll call.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Roll call vote. Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Nay.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Okay, presentation.
Presentation will make it. Can I make, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended now?
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it, motion carries. As Mr. Thomas started to talk about, there's been a donation made to the library and to Parks and Rec, I believe it is. Mr. Parton, do you want to, just all in the resolution? I was going to say, I thought, is Reverend Fields, Dwayne Fields? Is Mr. Rock, I thought I saw Mr. Rock come in. You don't want to come down, Reuben? I'm going to read it from up here, and we'll, and then I'll come down because of all the distancing stuff. So Reuben, you could stand here, and Reverend Fields, if you'll stand there, then we got six feet apart, we're all set. And I'm going to read the resolution from the Board of Supervisors. "A resolution of gratitude to the Caroline County branch of the NAACP for its generous support of Caroline County, whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has placed tremendous strains on the resources of local governments throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia and the nation as a whole, and whereas, like all localities, Caroline has faced significant challenges and obstacles as it strives to provide to the citizens while keeping employees and the public safe during these trying times. Whereas, one of the major areas of uncertainty for local governments is the fallout from the COVID-19-induced economic downturn and its impact on revenue collection for the county. And whereas, to help alleviate these concerns, the county recently received checks in the amount of $5,000 apiece for the Department of Parks and Recreation and the library from the Caroline County branch of the NAACP, and I'll do the National Association for the Advancement of Color People through a COVID relief grant provided by Dent quest. Whereas, these donated funds will help tremendously to stabilize operations in these two departments and will be put to great use in the service of Caroline citizens during this unprecedented crisis. Now therefore be it resolved that Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its deep gratitude to Caroline County branch of the NAACP for its much appreciated donation of funds and spirit of collaboration and generosity in which they were given, adopted this date, 11th day of August, 2020." Well, if they come over here. I can have a mask in one sec. In these, in these very different times, it is hard to do presentations to organizations. But I would like to extend our appreciation for the donation for the library and for Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec and the library provide the most outward facing services the county has. And for that, I'd like to thank the organization. Ruben, for all your years there and Dwayne for your current support. Thank you. Oh, I did not realize, and Caroline's promise. I did not realize that, but thank you. Next is the proposal for lease purchase financing for capital projects, Davenport. And I don't know who's gonna. Oh, Courtney's actually going to do this.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. It's unusual to actually be in front of somebody in person. This is only the third time I've done it since March 7th, so unusual times. This is the, this is the equipment lease for the fiscal '21 budget. You've got a presentation that we handed to you. Somebody have a clicker? You got it. Perfect. You'll go to the first slide for me. Thank you. So we sent out the RFP back in early July to our banking list. Basically, we got back eight different responses that we'll go through in just a moment. The equipment lease list, you can see there listed. And what you'll see is we have different amortizations for the different projects. What we did is we asked the banks to give us two different bids. One for each class, meaning like one for the four years, one for the five years, one for the seven, one for the 10. And then we also asked for a rate for the entire, for the entire list. So the total is there, a little over $2 million. On the next slide, you'll see the results of the presentation. We ended up with, as I said, eight different proposals, six of which all had rates below 2%. I know it's hard to read those numbers. But what we did was we took, it was very close. We actually took the ones that were the closest. Bank of America, US Bank on the option A, which had the separate leases. And then we looked at KeyBank, which had the lowest for the single rate. And KeyBank came out to be the lowest. It was very, very close. Next slide, please. Basically, their structure is a single lease, so it would be one lease for all the different projects. The rate would be 1.403% fixed for 10 years. You can prepayment. There was a prepayment penalty that declines between the first and fifth year. After the fifth year, there's no penalty. So if there became funds available to pay them off, we could do that. There are no bank council fees that are included. And basically, they just requested we close by September the 11th. So the next slide has the estimated debt service for the lease. You can see that there are higher payments in the first four years. And then it declines as the, just kind of according to that first slide, which shows the four, five, seven, and 10 years for the various projects. So our recommendation on the next slide is to take the KeyBank proposal. It basically gives us the lowest rate for the 10-year rate. It enables us to enter into a single lease instead of four different leases. Makes the payments, making, tracking it a little bit easier for the county. The interest rate is fixed, so we don't have any future interest rate risk. And it's also fixed between now and closing, meaning it's not going to float with interest rates. It allows us prepayment prior to final maturity at any time, and there's no bank closing clause. On the next slide, basically with your approval tonight, we would move toward closing sometime before September 11th. And you have a, in your packet, a resolution put together by bond counsel that is seeking your approval tonight for us to move forward with this. Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, there is one thing in here that happened after budget. The, one of the oldest chillers here that we didn't replace when we did the energy performance contract because it didn't work with the numbers. We've had a valve on the compressor go bad. And so it's one of those things that you can fix, but there are two compressors. So as soon as you spend, and I don't remember how much, Joey will have to tell me that, trying to repair this chiller that's over 20 years old, then you'll have a lot of money sunk and then could have the same failure with another compressor. So we do have in there the cost of that, and I think it's $85,000 on slide four. But that wasn't a budgeted amount in the '21 budget. But right now, we don't have a compressor running, so we have to shift around how we cool the building. So I felt it was good to stick in this equipment lease in this, instead of having to try to come up with either the 20-some thousand to repair it or 85,000 to replace it when we could finance it for 10 years. So that is outside of budget, but I wanted you to be aware. If you did, did actually approve that, that's in there.
Thank you, Mr. Cully.
I have one question.
Mr. Thomas? Because I've got a couple.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
You have in the list that the issuance cost slash contingency is 100, oh, yeah, $100,000?
That's our plug number. It's basically us and bond counsel. It'll be less than that, but we haven't gotten a number from bond counsel yet.
So that's not, that's not a real number? That's a ballpark number?
That's a max, not to exceed. It won't be that close.
So it's really going to be close to like 20,000 and the chiller will be?
Yeah, it won't be that low either. I'm not that far off my estimates.
Okay.
But that's similar to what we did in the spring. It's the same number we used in the spring.
All right, but we don't, we don't want to necessarily use the contingency money on a financing project. That seems kind of rare, right?
So it's not contingency from your budget?
No, it's contingency from the borrowing.
It's just a rounding number, right. We won't, we will set the final number once we have everything. So we won't borrow more than we need, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rogers, I have a couple of questions. In our borrowing for the sheriff's cars for last year, they were unable to purchase them because they're not being made currently because of the COVID shutdown. So in the event we borrow the money, but we can't buy anything for some period of time, three, four, five months, what impact does that have? I mean, we'll have borrowed the money, so we'll start making payments on it, correct?
Yeah, in February. But so we won't make payments until later. But you can, that money will sit in the bank, earns some interest, obviously not as much as 1.4%.
So we wouldn't really see the money till February? Or we'd have to make a payment till February?
We wouldn't make a payment till February. Right.
So.
Roughly six months out, yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't really have an effect if we can't make the purchase? That's all I'm curious about is, is, does it have an effect?
It just sits in the bank and earns interest until we need it.
I mean, 1.4%. All right.
Yeah, that's what I said. You're not going to earn what we're paying on it, but you'll earn something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Questions? Hearing none? Anybody's pleasure.
I'll make a motion. We move forward with the financing, financing with Key?
KeyBank, yes, sir.
KeyBank. Key Government Finance.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? And I'll vote aye.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to mention that we are continuing to look for refinancing opportunities with rates being basically at their all-time lows. And we did, VRA approached us back in the summer, asking if we wanted to be a part of one of their pools. We told them it would probably be better to wait, so that's something we may look at this fall. But we'll be back to you with any opportunities.
So rates right now, this is basically 1.4%? And the last rate, the last financing we did last year was like, what, 2.1, 2.2?
Sounds about right. I don't remember. I apologize. But yeah, it's, rates have dropped pretty substantially. We are at all-time lows on tax exempt rates right now.
But we still got some 5% and 6%.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking.
Funding out there.
Keep, keep in mind that in 2017, Congress, when they did the Tax Act change, we can't refinance bonds with tax exempt bonds anymore unless you're within 90 days of the call date. So we have to use taxable debt. There has been some discussion with this, say this, the House side introduced on July 1, a bill that was attached to the transportation bill to bring that back so we could use taxes and bonds to advance refund debt, which would help local governments. I think this is a way of trying to give back to local governments without handing a check to local governments. Because the Senate's also introduced a bill that we're hoping might get attached to this, to the next stimulus that they've been discussing.
So that would allow us to do what exactly then?
To refinance existing tax exempt debt and not have to use taxable debt, which is higher interest.
Higher cost.
That cost us, remember, we had to refinance the school bond. And we paid a couple of hundred thousand dollars because of the tax cut.
You're looking at interest rates that are anywhere from 3/4 to 1% higher because they're taxable.
So what we just borrowed is a?
This is tax exempt. What we just borrowed is tax exempt. But to refinance, unless you're within 90 days of the prepayment date, you have to use taxable debt, which is what we had to do.
Yeah. Which meant we had to refinance it.
Right. Because it, because it came up on a time where we had, there was a mandatory refinance date.
Exactly.
Yeah, it wasn't quite fair that there was a tax cut.
It's not mandatory. It's actually optional, but still. Usually in my, in my, in my career, most everything, once we get close to a redemption date, it's usually refinancable lately. Because rates have done that through my career, but we'll see.
Right.
Well, we'll keep looking, see if there are any other opportunities. But wanted you to be aware that there may be opportunities, and we'll continue looking for them, and maybe Congress will help us out a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
All right, Mr. Thomas did ask me to look into that. We had a Zoom meeting with the schools. And one of the things that they told us, which is, I haven't been able to confirm, but I do not doubt it. Their revenues were a lot stronger than what they thought. Our sales tax revenue has been better than what we had anticipated, even though our meals tax revenue is off. So they also received lottery money that they were told earlier in the pandemic that they weren't going to receive. So I think their revenues are where they thought they would be for the FY '20 budget. And their expenditures are down because of the school being closed. And, you know, the savings that have resulted from that. So I do believe they saved $2,300,000. But to confirm all that, we won't be able to do that till September, when Beth has finished closing August. Because she has a bunch of things that she's got her crew back to July, June 30. And some of it she hasn't gotten from the state yet, which some of those are on August 15. So I did talk to her. She's on vacation, or she would be explaining this to you. But I did talk to her today. And so she doesn't have those final numbers. So I can't really give you a final, final of what they had. But I do believe that they saved money on expenditures for being closed. Their revenues were strong and met budget, and therefore that that was what they were able to save. And they still have 1.6 that they have, and they would like to have that re-appropriated, obviously, along with FY '18 and FY '19 funds that were carried over. So I hope that provides some explanation. But until we get closer to closing, I can't tell you exactly where our revenues and expenditures are either until we can get through August.
Mr. Cully? And maybe, I don't know, but I know there's $700,000 that's out there from previous years that the schools would like right now, and we're waiting on that until the cuts. And we've told them that. When they say we refuse to meet with them, we just, we're not refusing to meet with them. We're refusing to meet with them until we know what the cuts are. So there's, there's two, two variations of that story. My question to you and I is, the, can, if that money is left over, do they have to, I mean, the 1.6 million, can they spend it now?
No. Their budget ends June 30, like everybody else's. Their payroll, because they have 10-month employees on contract that are paid over 12 months, the July and August payroll is always accrued back to the previous year. So they have payroll they did, and that's what they did with the bonuses and that.
So could they technically then legally, I mean, I'm just, because I don't know. They could technically go out and give another $1,000 bonus today if they wanted? I mean, they have the money, obviously, but I mean, I.
I would think so. I can't answer that. That becomes, but the auditor did talk to them and said that what they did with, in July was approvable. Now whether they can do another one in August, that's not for me to answer.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cully. Move on to appointments. Mr. Thomas? Board of Zoning Appeals, Mattapanai District.
And you look at me with a look of surprise. Yes, I do have an appointment for the zoning of appeals, and it's Deronte Rollins. I've given Mrs. Hall his contact, name and number, email and things. So if I could make a motion to appoint Mr. Rollins, I would appreciate a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I feel like the Board of Assessors and professional assessors needs a little bit, because this didn't seem intuitive to me when I read this. Mr. Cully?
What we found, number one, with the pandemic going on, we probably should have appointed the Board of Assessors in the middle of all that, where we were barely operating only on emergency type things. So we did some research, and there's only those counties that are listed in towns, maybe, or cities. Cities, because towns don't do reassessment. Cities and those few counties that have boards of assessors. Most everybody, my whole career in Middlesex, we had a professional assessor, which was a certified assessor from the company that we used, served that role. And then the Board of Equalization, which are citizens from the county, then hear appeals if a citizen has gone to the professional assessor and didn't get satisfactory action. So usually, you weed out some issues when the professional assessor says, this is why I did it, and I'm going to show you the comps. They kind of go through it, and the person goes, yeah, I kind of understand. And so those don't appeal. And then the ones where they still don't agree, appeal to the Board of Equalization. So all the assessors are another level of people you've got to find with the proper knowledge of real estate to serve that role when you've hired a company that has a certified appraiser, certified en masse appraisals. Because this is not an appraisal like you would get on your house if you were trying to sell it. It's a mass county-wide appraising. And it is different from a single homeowner appraisal. They'll never match up. They're not designed to match up. It's trying to provide a equalization so that properties of similar styles and similar areas of the county are being assessed in the same manner. So I think if you introduce this Board of Assessors in the process now, they've got to review all the work that's already been done. You risk slowing the process down to where the company doesn't finish. And it's in their contract. If there's a Board of Assessors, they're not contractually bound to finish because they can't make that promise because that is out of their realm. Because the Board of Assessors could slow everything down, change things, go in, want them to do this, that, and the other. So our recommendation from staff, in that the majority of the state does it with the professional assessor, we appoint Wamplareens as our professional assessor. When they finish the assessment, they will send out the notices with information. If you have a question or a concern or want to appeal this to the assessor, they meet with them. They'll set up times. They do, they go through the whole thing and meet. From that, they make adjustments, they send out another letter. And if people are still not happy, then they will be called in my office. We'll be setting up appointments for the Board of Equalization, which we've done in the past. So there's always that level of citizens to review, and it's at the highest level. There's a standard. The Board of Equalization actually receives training from the state. The Board of Assessors does not. So you have this high level of overview board from the Board. So you have this high level of overview board from the Board of Equalization, and that would be our recommendation as the way to handle it.
So my recollection is last time we did the Board of Assessors. Questions?
You've always done the Board of Assessors. But that is an older process that is being phased out statewide, basically.
Mrs. Long?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would move that since the county is contracted with professional appraisers, the Wampler Eads Group, and that satisfies the requirement of Virginia Code 58.1-3275, I would move that the Board appoint just a Board of Equalization for this reassessment as required under Code 58.1-3370 of the Code of Virginia, and that we do not do a point assessment board locally.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Can we head to that just real quick, that you're appointing the firm as the professional assessor? Not a person, but the firm.
That's fine, to make that addition to my motion.
So it is the firm, Wampler?
Wampler Eads Appraisal Group.
I'll amend my second as well.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mr. Cully.
Now, I have.
Mr. Chairman, can I, same topic, different direction?
Yep, I was going to do the same thing, but go ahead.
Other counties like us have a full-time assessor. Some are elected, some are on staff. Is that correct?
No, if you create an assessment department, it becomes a department separate from the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. And then the code sections change as to when you've got to reassess. So you're basically on a yearly or every other year. So you have to put enough staff on. So the smallest county I know of like us, and they're bigger than us by 10,000, is Gloucester. And it took them, because I was a neighbor in jurisdiction, it took them multiple years to get that department up and running correctly and getting those assessments out, and that's a big undertaking. Most of the time, you have to really have a lot of growth. You know, I would expect somebody like Stafford and Spotsylvania with lots of growth, lots of new, to be wanting to bring that all in-house every year, Hanover. We are probably a little bit too small for what that would cost to set up.
Okay.
Because you're talking about a whole staff, plus you're paying some person that's got that, an employee that has a professional assessor's.
Yeah, a marketable.
Marketable skill, so it's a pretty expensive operation to set up. And then they've got to do all of the county, so it's other data entry and field people and with this overall person overseeing it. Don't think we're there yet.
Okay.
We got rid of the assessor in the 80s. We had an assessor.
It was probably pretty expensive.
It was like $50,000, $60,000 sticks in my head.
Yeah, in the 80s, that was a lot.
Yeah, but they didn't wait five years for assessments, and that didn't impact their composite index and 70% tax.
We'll try to stay on a four-year. We just kind of slipped a year.
Okay.
But that's our goal, is to stay on a four-year. You can do it as frequently as you want, it's just an expense that's with that, so.
Does the expense go down if we were to go to three years?
No, because it's almost all are based on parcels. So the parcels they have to look at is what they're going to figure out their rate off of. So that's not going down, that's going up every year, and.
Well, some of it's getting taken off the books, but.
Well, that's true, but.
To 500 acres a year, we're losing?
Yeah, and there are some places we negotiated with, like Four Winds, where there's a boatload of lots that are just recorded, there's nothing on, woods. So they're not going to go look at those. So we negotiated a special rate with those, but.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One other question, when do we have to actually appoint a Board of Equalization?
You need to be thinking about it right now, and we'll be bringing that back on a future agenda. It's on September for you, but if you can come up with some names, and those need to be people that have an interest and a knowledge in the real estate world. And like I said, they have to go to some training with Department of Tax. And, yeah, landowners, there's some requirements to be on that group. But, yeah, we'll be coming back, because they will need to be trained and up and running, you know, by December or January.
I was going to say, I thought we started in December with hearings.
Right, so it could be late December or early January, if things keep moving in the pace we're moving.
So people only, how long do they have to appeal once, I mean?
A year, I think, isn't it?
I thought it was 30 days from the day they got their assessment to actually appeal it.
No, most people appeal pretty quick. But like I said, the first time they get a notice, it's going to go back to the company. And then only then, if they can't agree that, you know, the company doesn't adjust it the way they want it, then they would get another notice, here's your new assessment after you've appealed to the company. Then they would be making appeal to the Board of Equalization, which we would handle, you know, we've handled in the office before, set up all the appointments. And then they have hearings. I mean, there are regular hearing with minutes and the whole thing.
And just to clarify, all of our appointments have expired, so we all need to have come up with a name?
Correct, yes, because they.
One per district?
You could be, it's always been one per district? Has it been that many? There's a certain limit, because it's in code. I think that's what happened to us last time. Somebody didn't have one, because I think the max you can have is five. Now I don't see Ben anymore, all I see is me. This is horrible. I told you all earlier, I didn't want to see me when I was talking, but anyway. It can confuse you. It's like, who's that old guy?
With that masked man.
In a mask. Yeah, there we go, that's much better. I don't look in the mirror for that same reason. But anyway, Ben would be able to give us all the legals on that, but I think it was five before, and so we had to kind of compromise on who got one, but. I can't even remember.
Well, I know we need to figure this out, because it's.
On the September 11th, we'll have all of the, we weren't prepared to talk about it tonight, so we're just guessing from memory.
But they need to be in place in October? I mean, how long does the training take? Because if you're going to go, that's why I'm asking this, because when you go to somebody, you need to know what they're going to ask you. What do I have to do? What are the qualifications?
We'll send you all that. We'll send you the qualifications, and it's basically hearings. And I can't tell you, my past with Wampler, we didn't have a lot of appeals. But I have had, in a small jurisdiction with 14,000 parcels, 1,000 appeals when the assessment wasn't good. But I'm not expecting that out of this company. They try to do a good job and equalize things and meet with people and try to understand it, make them understand, and try to come to a good understanding. So I wouldn't expect a lot of appeals, but they could have, I mean, I wouldn't want to promise anybody serving on this, hey, it's nothing. It could be, I mean, they're going to have appeals.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Long?
So, Mr. Cully, before, when we come to the September meeting, we will already have had that information. And you want us to have names at our September meeting?
If you can, if possible. I mean, the latest would be October. Correct. And we'll get something out to you with all the qualifications and the names of people that have served in the past. And the maximum number you can have. Seems like to me there's two alternates in five. Doesn't that, doesn't that? Yeah, Board of Assessors you can have what you want, because it's not controlled by state code. Right, there was something to do with an alternate in case somebody can't be at the hearing. They have to get fully trained and even as the alternate, so that's kind of a, hey, you're going to be an alternate, you got to go through all the training, but you may not. But I think sometimes they have, because people can't make every hearing, and so the alternate fills in.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Cully. Community management team, we have an appointment to make, and I think it's been submitted. Paige Carter? Can we take a motion to appoint Paige Carter to the?
So moved.
CP, Community Policy and Management Team. I knew I saw it. CPMT. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? I just have it, motion carries. Consent agenda. Anything coming off the consent agenda?
Question for G?
Because I have a question for D.
So I would ask that we discuss E, F, and H. So looks like D, E, F, G, and H we need to discuss. So I think approval.
D, E, F, and G.
Right. And H?
And H?
Yes.
So we can approve A, B, C?
A, B, C, and I.
H is, can I explain? H, that's what we, the county received money from the NAACP.
Where you want to appropriate.
So they have to reappropriate that money to the department.
Right, okay.
So that's really what it is. So we can take H off?
So it's A, B, C, H, and I?
Correct.
Can I have a motion for those agenda items?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Black was the second. Or Mr. Forehand, Mr. Black? Pam, you have, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Start with?
D.
D. And my only question on D is, Mr. Cully, do we know when we're going to be able to actually get the vehicles?
Yeah, I think we can place a PO for those, she just wiped this off, I didn't want to get too close. I think we can place a PO for it. We just had to have it appropriated back into FY '20 because it expired. And we have the money, because as we borrowed it, we just borrowed it later. Yeah, the vehicles are available to be purchased right now. We just had a PO, which I couldn't issue without the funds being appropriated. These are last year, see, last year, we waited to borrow the money. Correct. For this year. And the reason we brought it so early is so we wouldn't be caught with this same scenario, where by the time we could sign the PO, because we had the money, the vehicles, we actually issued a PO, and then they canceled it on us last year because they sawed out.
What's the total number of vehicles?
It's in your board packet. I don't remember right offhand, because they bought 12. They bought some trucks already out of the money. But the money's there for what the PO is available.
You have more than the two trucks that you use for fire now? You got another fire truck? I mean, another truck you use for fire?
Yes, there's three of them. And that was budgeted. He bought what was budgeted in the capital improvement budget last year, other than these Dodges. And we issued a PO for the Dodges, but then it was canceled.
Okay, I'm just trying to count.
No, I understand. But we did do all that math, and the money is all available for the vehicles that he wants.
Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to stick to my guns. I think we're treating other departments different, and I want the schools to be accountable. But I also want to treat them in the same manner in terms of reappropriating funds. And if we don't know what the governor is sending, what that final budget is, I think we should continue to hold on to money until we know exactly where we are. Rather than, I mean, it may take, it's going to take a couple of months, but I don't think we should be spending, reappropriating funds that were not spent until we know definitely where we stand. We're saying it to schools, and I'm trying to hold schools accountable, but I think they should be treated fair as well. So, help me, Mr. Cully.
Well, it was borrowed funds, which we would then, if we didn't, we got permission from the lender because of the canceled PO to buy a later car.
From last year.
So we would have to pay that back. It's not something we could actually keep in the bank like saved money. So that does present somewhat of a difference. It's not like a department saved $300,000.
Yeah, we've already made payments on that.
Correct, and it's in the bonds, so we're paying on it. It would change that amount, but you can't borrow for vehicles and then do anything else with it. Put it in their bank.
Are the vehicles collateral? That's something I didn't see with the, are they actually collateral?
On these leases, I'm not sure how, that would have been a Courtney question.
He's gone.
No, but it's the way you can borrow for vehicles, I mean, it's set up for government leasing. You can't do it in your private life.
Oh, collateral.
Mr. Chair?
I would also point out, it's not that they didn't try to do it last year. They tried, but the cars weren't there, and they couldn't do it. The need was there, the money was appropriated, so that makes it a little different. It's like, you know, ordering something. That's like ordering something and it being backordered for eight months or 10 months. You still got to pay for it. You just have to wait. And so I think we have to look at this a little bit differently.
All I'm saying is circumstances change, and they have changed. So I think we have to look at it also. That's what the taxpayers are requesting that we do. And like I said, we're doing the same to the schools. We're doing the same thing. They had money left over. They say, hey, give us our money. We want to spend it on whatever they want to spend it on. But I just, I just don't, if we're going to hold and be principled, then we should be principled across the board. That's all I'm saying.
And I would not argue that fact, except in this case, it's borrowed for purpose. So we're sort of, we're already signed up to spend it. We're sort of obligated to do that.
Right, and I think Mr. Dav, didn't the young man, Rogers, just say that if we don't spend the money, it would be, it would sit in the bank? Did he just say that just a minute ago?
It will, but, I mean, you can't just leave it forever, but.
Right, but we're not talking about forever, because none of us are going to be here forever. We're talking about right now.
Right, but the one other difference in comparing it to the schools, it's not, schools also have a CIP budget.
Right, that's correct.
And so stuff that's remaining in the school CIP budget, you reappropriate that to capital. That's what this is, capital, not operations. We're not changing this money from 300,000 that the sheriff's going to then put in salaries and bonuses and things like that, it's going into the capital that originally was going to go in. So that is a difference. It's not, it doesn't carry on beyond the debt service payments in the future. And one other thing Alan did find for me, there is a security interest in the vehicles in the one you just approved. So I assume that would have been in the one last year, too, whether that's a fire truck or ambulance or anything. We have to insure them, we have to take care of them.
I was just making sure we were going to order the vehicles, and we could. So I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item D, since I pulled it.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote. Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? And I'll vote aye. Agenda, Consent Agenda Item E, Mr. Thomas, I believe, was it you, Mr. Underwood, or Mr. Thomas?
I did, same, basically same reason. I mean, we can just vote, but I don't think we should be reappropriating funds until we know where we are.
This was the $20,000 to Social Services for the program to assist someone getting back on their feet with transportation?
I just want to be principled and maintain the same vote that any monies reappropriated should not be spent until we know where we are. So I'm just going, any of the agenda items regarding reappropriation of funds to be spent, I will not support until I know exactly where the county is and what the budget is from the governor's office.
Mr. Chairman?
Until you call for a vote.
Mrs. Long?
Mr. Cully, is it possible, since only a few thousand of that 20,000 were spent last year, to just take, round what was spent last year, just round it up a little bit and put the rest back into general funds since?
Certainly, you can reappropriate however much you want.
I got to find what they spent last year. Hold on. I know it's in here.
Looks like they spent $4,120.
We didn't get the program up and running, I don't remember exactly when it was, but it certainly wasn't at the beginning of the fiscal year.
It was February.
That wouldn't represent a full year's fiscal year's expenditures.
So if we appropriate, reappropriated 5,000, if that was spent, they could come back and request additional funding at a later time? So does that?
That's fine, I'm just sticking to my guns.
I'm trying to help you out here.
I'm just saying, I'm okay with it, but I just don't, don't think we can talk out of both sides of our mouth, that's all.
Any other comments?
Well, this money. is going to serve our neediest of needy people in the county that are already within the social services program that may need this to help get back on their feet. If we're going to hold back money, I don't think this is the right one. Anyway, that's, that's my take on it.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we reappropriate the $15,880 that was carried over from last year into the current budget.
I'm going to second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? And I'll vote aye. F was polled.
Might be erroneously polled, but polled nonetheless.
Okay.
Motion to approve this F.
Mrs. Long, do you want to make a motion to approve Agenda Item F, or Mr. Underwood?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item, uh, consent Agenda Item F.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As the motion carries, G.
G, I pulled G. G is supplemental appropriation for the registrar for CARES Act funds received, is this the first go-round of CARES Act funding? Is this the second go-round of CARES Act funding? And what determines if I've got enough money to have enough people work the election?
It was the first money, but we haven't seen anything since the second one specifically, because that was sent not to us, but to the registrar.
$56,000.
Correct, so that was sent to her, that here's your CARES allocation, so it really wasn't part of our original 2.6 million. So I don't know if she's getting a second one or not, but either way, it's still got to be appropriated into her budget to be able to be used. We don't have to have a public hearing because overall it's not that big an amount, but. It, obviously if she gets another 56, we'll be back at that time to have it appropriated into the budget, but we've, like the others, we've received the money.
Okay.
And is this earmarked that it can only be used for those purposes?
Yeah, so she got a letter with what she can spend it on.
Now, I've, I've been in touch with the registrar about this before, I knew we were getting money specifically for her, because it wasn't in our, our CARES Act funding. My, my question, and I guess I will direct this directly to the electoral board at some point in time, but I expect as we discussed last, last meeting, there'll be a lot of people who do absentee ballots. There will be a lot of people who are concerned about working the polls that may not work the polls this year. So we're going to have to increase the salary for poll workers, increase the protection for poll workers, and add some more people to process the absentee ballots. And I don't know if that's enough, and how do we figure out from the county perspective if that's enough?
I'm pretty sure it's that, um, the registrar's been working with county staff, the, the fire and rescue and, and public works on her needs and planning, so I, I think there's been ongoing planning for elections.
See, we have to know now, because, because, I mean, me personally, the district that I represent votes in the gym.
Correct.
So we can pretty much be, be social distanced and, and safe. Some of y'all vote in places that are really kind of close, like the bathroom and whatnot, so you're going to have to work out something to make sure you're safe, and without the Voting Rights Act, you can move it, but you have to have, what, 60 days or 90 days?
She's got, still got plenty of time to send out new voter registration cards, so that they can be moved, you know, and.
We need to make sure folks are safe when they're trying to vote. Because you're at the dawn library.
Correct, and there's not a lot of space there.
And Carmel Christian. So you can go to the gym at Carmel Christian. You're in Town Hall, that's kind of close, and Salem.
Salem, but it's in the, it's in the multipurpose room.
Gymnasium.
Madison.
Both districts. Both the south and north.
Yeah, Lewis and Clark, and you? Yeah.
County Line Baptist, one location.
It's kind of big, you got a tight one.
I have the Upper Carolina Firehouse and then the Port Royal, uh, Chamber Room or Meeting Room, which is small, but
Tiny, yeah.
tiny, we do have, but you can go in a circle, and there is the firehouse.
See, we're going to have to, we're going to have to help them make sure we assure our location, so that's all I'm saying.
We'll, we'll work with her.
All right, I just wanted to bring that to attention, not delay everything, so I move to approve it.
I have a motion to approve Agenda Item G, second. Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? As the motion carries. All right, that is the consent agenda, we can take a quick 10-minute break and be back at 7:33 for public comment. We are adjourned. We are up to public comment. And one of the things I want to remind everybody is on the 25th of August, we have a public hearing set for the monument. So any discussion of the monument tonight, other than the referendum, is not up according to.
The, the rules of the board state that you can't do public comment on a public hearing scheduled for the same day.
Only the same day, okay.
Or an item that's been previously held as a public hearing, previously held as a public hearing, it's still open for a decision.
Right.
Okay.
So.
Well, we will start public comment. Who is, there is three minutes, and I'm going to ask you to wrap up at the three-minute mark, and if you could hold to the time, it would really be appreciated.
And, and ask them to social distance a little better.
And, and could you, social distance a little better along the wall, please, Mr. Thomas just pointed that out, that we're kind of bunched up. And I'd like everybody to state their name and their, and the district from which they are from in the beginning of their comment. And yet do not give us your address. You may begin.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Roland Spels from the Reedy Church District, and I am the Chair of the Caroline County Public School Board, and the remarks referenced this evening in your opening board comments were related to my remarks from last night. So I stand before you to clarify and to expound upon my stance and observation. I did indeed say that Caroline County does not need in this season to endure a COVID pandemic, a social injustice pandemic, and a communication pandemic. What I discussed were the occasions in which I personally have experienced several things that have concerned me. And while I have prepared for this evening a list of dated communication and correspondence and requests, I will simply use the first five minutes of tonight's meeting as my case in point.
You have three.
Comments from the dais are indicative to the systemic issues in which I express my concern. We have seen this a million times, we just want so-and-so to respond. That's a school question, or I can't speak to that, that is an issue for me. To avoid sounding confrontational, might I also point out that agenda items can indeed be added to your meeting as it was done, it is possible. There are different entities and agencies who provide periodic updates to this board, but not schools. CCPS asks for quarterly updates, and that was denied. Five years ago, when we implemented the strategic plan and that was launched, we asked for it at that time as well. As a courtesy, 2-on-2 meetings were then suggested, and comments that have come from that even tonight reference things being misconstrued. I have addressed it privately and I will address it publicly. I take personal offense to my integrity and my professional understanding of decorum being called into question. And so now what we have signed up for is some good trouble. Let me be very clear, I have personally attended board of supervisors' meetings since I was in middle school. I have studied parliamentary procedure, I understand to watch where principles and guiding motions are being made. I understand how to follow the money, and I understand policy and procedure. It is unacceptable for the current events to be going down due to the lack of communication. When I send an email as the chairman of the board, as an elected official in Caroline County, the least that I can expect is a professional courtesy of a reply, and I do not apologize for that, I will not lower my standard, it is unacceptable. When we are fiscally responsible for several million dollars, the lack of common sense, the lack of communication is unacceptable. That is my time, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spels. No, I, I'm going to say, hold applause, it's not allowed during the board meetings.
Good evening, Chair Sealy, Vice Chair Thomas, and members of the board. My name is Nancy Carson, I am the Vice Chair for the Caroline County School Board. This evening, I want to publicly reiterate the school board's CC, and the CCPS leadership team's continued request for joint board meetings. As noted in the school's division's various requests dating as far back as February and as recent as Thursday, Sunday, and Monday of this past week, CCPS believes that joint board meetings, communication, collaboration, transparency, and trust are the standard operating procedures that yield a successful school division, county, and hashtag one Caroline. Collaboration, this is working together with one or more persons to complete a project or task or develop ideas or processes. This occurs when two or more people work together towards a common goal that benefits the group. Board-to-board meetings, when we have had them, allow the boards to talk. These meetings began in 2012 to inform both boards and relevant items. Communication is the act of transferring information from one place, person, or group. There has been no board-to-board meeting since January 2020. The lack of discussion of many relevant and important ideas have been communicated only through our superintendent. The response from the board of supervisors has been await until the superintendent has been meeting with Mr. Cully and Mr. Pardon, but board, but joint board meetings and board-to-board meetings have been refused. Open communication between the board would alleviate miscommunication or untruths. Collaborative communication and open discussion gives each person an opportunity to contribute and ensure all ideas are valued and respected. Each person in CCPS has repeatedly asked for items to be put on the board of supervisor agenda. We have been refused time and time again. As the biggest employer in Caroline County, we should be on the agenda monthly to keep the county abreast of current items and changes due to COVID, the state regulations, as well as CCPS monthly information. The lack of communication between the boards is causing a lack of trust, of mistrust, and transpa, and lack of transparency. Transparency, this means operating in such a way that it's easy for others to see what actions are performed. And politics transparency is used as a means of holding public officials accountable. Transparency builds trust. CCPS has been fully transparent in sharing information. Thus the need for board-to-board meetings and to be added to the share, to the monthly agenda. Information can be easily disseminated and eliminate board of supervisor members from calling CCPS employees to the podium to answer questions because we were not on the agenda.
Can I ask you to wrap it up, because you were past your three minutes?
Sure. Trust is a firm belief in the reliability and truth and ability of strength of someone or something. It is also the foundation for any relationship, and without it, we're on shaky ground. We are all part of Caroline County, hashtag one Caroline County. We should be united and working together for the betterment of Caroline County public schools. We might not always see eye to eye.
Ms. Carson, I need you to wrap it up.
But please try to work with us better.
Good evening. Chair Sealy, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the board, my name is Sean Kelly. I live in the Madison District, and on Thursday, July 30th, 2020, the CCPS School Board approved the virtual plus re-open model through the first quarter. All virtual, excuse me, I guess you have some water here. All virtual learners, uh, accept the PLUS Equity Groups, which is our special education group, the ELLs, and students with no or limited internet access. PLUS Groups come to school on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and they're transported to school by bus. The Department Planning and Needs, School Nutrition, Keith Connor informed the board last night that CCPS has applied for the CEP, which is the Community Eligibility Provisions, which will offer free meals to students in the county. Transportation will be notified next week that students, um, which students are required to be picked up so they can be transported to the schools. Mr. Wick informed the CCPS Board last night, and all members present, that the health and safety guidelines our staff is going to follow during the current pandemic, which are, um, obviously don't have the time to go into here, but the people there, they're going to be very well taken care of, I think. Instructionally, virtual instruction utilizes a plethora of educational apps. In addition, multiple professional developments to help staff utilize the latest technologies available. Also, students and parents will receive some helpful hints and apps to assist them, one of which was made to my attention last night, which I'm thankful of since I have children in the school, which is going to be really helpful, and I suggest everybody get on the division's website and look at that. Human Resources, despite the limitations of COVID-19, CCPS has continued to recruit highly qualified staff, mostly through virtual interviews. Technology, our tech team has done wonders helping provide Chromebooks and iPads to students in addition to providing the essential guidance necessary to help with providing Wi-Fi facilities, clean, 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 ad nauseam, and Mr. Chairman, I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Good evening, Chair Sealy, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the board, I'm John Copeland, Western Caroline Rep to the School Board. I was going to talk to you about some CARES funding. To help us some of the COVID issues incurred by the school division and local governments, the federal government has issued CARES Act to support schools, cities, and towns in response to COVID, and to help us overcome the expenses. Using calculations based on formulas, oops, that's, I'm reading Dr. Calvert, I am, I'm sorry. We need to get a little bit organized here, uh, here we are. End of my time. CCPS expenditures have continued to increase since we first learned about COVID. We originally issued $265,000 in COVID expenses, as of today, we're at nearly 1.2 million. Costs are rising statewide, it's not just us, it's everybody, and national COVID cases are growing exponentially day to day, involving mitigation strategies, extensive technology needs, and the needs of various safety items. For the schools FY, FY21 funding levels, if they stay the same and we get 740,000 of CARES funds and 65, 365,000 of community money we're not going to have enough money to meet our needs, at one point, nearly 1.2 million. To demonstrate some of the needs, that the vast needs and, and the, the vast changes in the needs, I'll show you that health and safety, face coverings, we're going to spend $30,000 just on face coverings, cleaning supplies are going to be $60,000. That includes overtime and custodial outsourcing. Cleaning equipment's going to cost 13,200. Technology devices, which we already talked about, were $431,400 for Chromebooks, iPads, and other devices. We're going to have to spend $249,600 for internet service and other devices. Technology, um, for document cameras are going to be $30,000, swivels IT, for, let's say, uh, for virtual instruction of $5,300. Coordination of virtual learning and innovation, $80,860. It's an individual to do this, to have an IT assistant is $39,649. That's Furley Burden FTEs. We have student registration software.
Mr. Copeland can ask you to wrap it up, because you're past your three.
Absolutely, understood, $16,000. I will just tell you that obviously we, we see that we've got technology, cleaning supplies, software, personnel, so we need the extra funding as soon as you can possibly get it to us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Good evening, Chairman Seeley, Vice Chairman Thomas, and other board members. I'm Calvin Taylor. I represent the Port Royal District on the Caroline County Board of Supervisors. Level fiscal year 20 funding, increased CARES funding, and growing COVID expenses have resulted in the school division inability to fully entertain a face-to-face reopening. To reopen Caroline County Public School System must not only be able to cover known expenses presented to the county administrator, but the school division must have response funding accessible as needs arise. This is why the school's CARES fund from the federal government is to stretch from March 13th through September 30th, 2022. Unfortunately, the lack of local CARES funds, combined with level funding and growing needs, has resulted in the school system having to use these monies in 2020, leaving no financial reserve or capacity to respond to needed resources, COVID, cleaning, human resources needs, and so forth. The school system is remaining diligent in identifying potential sources of alternate income and will submit on August 14th a consolidated competitive grant application to the Virginia Department of Education for ESAR grants funds. With 32 school divisions vying for these monies, the school system must be able to immediately assess reliable funding sources that enable the board to entertain a full face-to-face reopening when it is safe and appropriate. As a result, it is critical that the school board revisit appropriations for fiscal year 18, 19, and 20 year-end funds, as well as create a collaborative committee inclusive of school representatives to discuss how the second round of $2.7 million of CARES funds should be appropriated. As indicated, without additional monies, a full return to face-to-face environment is not feasible or reasonable. Face-to-face school cannot take place unless we have funding to safely reopen. I realize that we are concerned about monies, we are concerned about the tax base, and we're concerned about not overtaxing our citizens. But I tell you, when you dial 911, you don't care what the tax rate is. If the fire engine breaks down before it gets to the fire, you don't care about the tax base.
Can you wrap it up, Mr. Taylor, because we're past our three?
Do the best you can, I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Do you have gloves?
Do I have gloves? Good evening. Before I begin, I would like for Dr. Monroe to pass some items to you that we had hoped to share if one of our agenda items for a return to learn presentation had been added.
Mr. Thomas is like, we don't, just leave them down with Mr. Parton?
Okay, great, thank you. If we could restart the clock, thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Seeley, Vice Chair Mr. Thomas, members of the board. I am the proud superintendent of Caroline County Public Schools, Sarah Calverick. I am a resident by heart and mind, but not by address. To help address some of the COVID-19 costs incurred by school divisions and local governments, the federal government issued the CARES Act to support schools, cities, towns with response expenses. Using a calculation formula based on the school division's Title I percentage, CCPS received $740,347. The school division's CARES Act funding is to be used over a two-year period, yes, I said a two-year period, and must stretch through September 30, 2022. On May 20, PS calculated approximately $265,000 of COVID-19 response expenditures, which were captured in an email to the county administrator and board of supervisors documenting the expenses thus far, identifying schools as permissible recipients of county CARES funds, and requesting future school representation as the county crafts plans to utilize the first round of $2.7 million by December 30, 2020. As of July 9th, 2020, CCPS reopening expenses quadrupled from the May costs, reaching approximately $1.2 million. These expenditures include face covering, signage, hand sanitizer, Chromebooks, et cetera, all essentials to school readiness in the COVID era. It is important to recognize that while CCPS has received $740,000 of direct federal response funds, this money, again, must stretch through September 2022. This is in stark contrast to the December 30 timeline provided to the county for the first second $2.7 million received by federal funds. Due to the expedited county timeline and the board of supervisor chairman's repeated denial and delay of all school division meeting requests, CCPS established a meeting agenda for a county and school staffing meeting between Mrs. Stevens, myself, Mr. Parton, and Mr. Cully. During this time, CCPS asked if a CARES committee had been developed and whether a CCPS teammate could be a participant at the table for the discussion. The county administrator indicated that he, Mr. Parton, and county colleagues were gathering spreadsheets from various departments for use at a future presentation for the board of supervisors. The county administrator did indicate that the school's needs would be included as they were, but there was no need for a school representative at this time. On July 8th, CCPS received a request from the county administrator to provide an updated spreadsheet for inclusion for the board of supervisors' agenda to be posted on July 9th, a 24-hour request for a comprehensive spreadsheet. Due to the school division's limited CARES funding, two-year spending period, and extensive reopening needs, we submitted our full $1.2 million request for board consideration.
Dr. Calverick, can you wrap it up because you're past your three minutes?
Yes, sir. I will jump to the conclusion of my comment. As we move forward, it is critical that in the absence of new K-12 federal funding, the board of supervisor appropriate our carryover funds from FY 18, 19, and 20, which would be utilized as one-time funding, while simultaneously evaluating how to utilize the second round of $2.7 million of CARES.
Dr. Calverick, come on.
To be clear, the county has received approximately $5.4 million, all to be spent by December 30th. Without additional access to carryo-
Dr. Calverick, you are, you are out of time. Dr. Calverick? Dr. Calverick? Ms. Stevens?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chair Seeley, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the board, and Mr. Cully. I am Marsha Stevens, the Chief Operations Officer of Caroline Public Schools. In the absence of additional CARES funding, access to CCPS carryover funds is critical for the school division to meet our obligations of returning the students safe to a safe learning environment during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, reappropriation, these one-time items must occur for CCPS to complete unfunded projects that were presented to the board of supervisors in January of $3.6 million for FY 21 CIP and capital outlay plans. CCPS staff has previously articulated the school division's need for FY 18 and 19 carryover funds in order to support these expenditures. CCPS 18 carryover is $35,000. Remaining FY 19 is $433,000. In addition, there's $300,000 in Anthem funds that CCPS finance staff has had multiple attempts to discuss with county finance, and at this time is still unresolved. These funds remain in the school's deferred revenue account in this county's financial books. As of the May reports, they were still unresolved, and in the, or they are unresolved as of today. They are still reflected in the May reports of the county. As we begin to close out FY 20, CCPS is anticipating a healthy carryover balance. This is approximately $1.6 million carryover figure, which reflects a number of many variables. Savings related to closure of schools on March 13th, an increase in sales tax when we were all, including the county budget, was anticipating a decrease. A full access lottery funding, in which VDOE had instructed us that we would not get most likely. Additionally, many items that needed to be purchased in preparation for return to school were unavailable due to the supply. In recognition of the CCPS team ability to pivot as an organization, the largest employer in Caroline, and the complex work performed in response to the March 13 closure, CCPS did provide a one-time pandemic pay with year-end funds totaling $645,700. In addition, as you recall, during the 1920 school year, insurance members experienced high claims resulting in 25.9% increase. CCPS made adjustments to their plans, and CCPS board recognized this hardship upon their employees and provided a one-month health insurance premium holiday utilizing year-end funds in the amount of $120,000. Without access to the carryover funds or additional CARES funds, the CCPS leadership team and school board will be unable to consider full face-to-face return due to the lack of funding and resources, proactive planning, and response capacity. Thank you for your time this evening, and look forward to our joint meetings together.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Paige Carter, and I'm a resident of the Mattapenai District, a longtime resident here in Caroline County. And I'm also a new and very proud member of the Caroline County Public School System. I am the new Director of Special Education. In my first 40 days here, since July 1st, we have worked some long and intense days. What you need to know, for the past 30 years, I've supported school divisions across the state with special needs programs. I am here to tell you this team a credit to none. Our staff has returned this week, and they too are ready to go. In all of these circumstances, they're scared, they're anxious, they're excited, everything you can imagine, that's what they're feeling. While I acknowledge your comments tonight regarding the opportunity to meet in the future, and even with the request for information to- As a member of this amazing community, I'm saddened by the multiple requests that have been denied. Joint meetings have been repeatedly delayed. Funding uncertainties being what they are, you should not refuse regardless of the version. Ongoing communication should be your highest priority. Families with school-aged children are a large part of your constituency, and that alone should increase your need and ship with the school division. It should also increase your interest in working for the kids of this county. And with all that is going on in the world, if ever there was a time for collaboration, isn't it now? Secondly, Caroline County Public Schools has been a good steward of the money that has been entrusted to them. You are holding carryover for three years that could be utilized by the school division in a time such as this. There's also insurance money, that I was assured in an email on 6/9 from your chairman that the insurance money would be for sure on the board of supervisors' agenda to discuss going forward with the school board, and we will livestream for transparency. That hasn't happened yet. My question is, how can you possibly make well-informed and well-timed decisions when all attempts at community collaboration have been delayed, denied, or just thwarted by you? As a longtime resident and active member of this community, it is, it does make me sad, but frankly, it's embarrassing and it's unacceptable. Please continue to reconsider the importance of ongoing communication. You've asked for communication tonight, and I believe we would have given it to you at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Lydell Fortune, and I'm a resident of the Mattapenai District. To address new business item number nine, the possible referendum on removing the Confederate Memorial, we rise today to demand that the board of supervisors lead and not follow on the issue of whether the Confederate Memorial should be removed from the courthouse lawn. The Loudoun County Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to remove the Confederate statute from outside their courthouse. The City Council of Alexandria, Virginia unanimously voted to remove a Confederate statue located on public property within their city limits. The City Council of Portsmouth, Virginia unanimously voted to remove a Confederate statue located on public property within their city limits. The City Council of Virginia Beach unanimously voted to remove the Confederate statue located outside their courthouse. The City Council of Williamsburg unanimously voted to remove a Confederate memorial from a public park within their city limits. The Board of Supervisors of Albemarle County did the same thing. The Board of Supervisors at Brunswick County did the same thing. And even the Liberal Bastion of Farmville, Virginia unanimously voted to remove a Confederate statue from public property within their town. These decisions were made without kicking the can down the road by requesting a non-binding advisory referendum in November. The geographic diversity of these localities and the diversity of these constituencies clearly illustrate that these decisions were not based on region, party affiliation, or race. These decisions were based on the inappropriateness of allowing memorials to the Confederate cause to remain erected on public property in 2020. Those who feel passionately about the issue should absolutely be heard during the required public hearing on August 25th. However, this issue certainly should not be taken to a referendum in November. The citizens of the county elected leaders, not followers, take action immediately on or after the public hearing on August 25th as to whether or not the Confederate memorial located, erected on the courthouse lawn in Bowling Green, Virginia, should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune.
Good evening. I am Dr. President, and I reside in the Madison District. I am also a native of Dawn, Virginia, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the community in reference to the Confederate statute. As an Associate Professor of Criminal Justice at Bowie State University, I understand the complexities and nuances associated with slavery and the connection to the criminal justice system that we currently have in place. The statute which resides on the lawn of the Circuit Court needs to be removed now. It is an issue that must be addressed now, right now. We cannot wait until November to decide on this issue. And in terms of heritage, when we talk about heritage in the Confederate statute representing heritage, whose heritage are you going to uphold? I have a heritage here. My grandparents were enslaved on, that's my heritage, that's my legacy, I'm still, and so therefore, I urge the board of supervisors to vote favorably moving the Confederate statute. In Caroline County, the criminal justice system is supposed to represent truth and justice, and justice is supposed to be blind. Justice cannot be blind if we have a statute in front of the courthouse that represents oppression, oppression of our people. And so therefore, I urge you to vote to remove the statute.
Thank you.
Chairman Seeley, Vice Chair, members of the Caroline County Board of Supervisors, and all in attendance, good evening. My name is Joseph James, and I'm from the Reedy Church District, and I live in Dawn, Virginia. It is now time for us, as a county, Commonwealth, and as a nation, to rectify all things not- It is now time for us as a county, Commonwealth, and as a nation to rectify all things not representative of a fair, just, and equal society. I'm one who stand with others who are asking, requesting, and yes, demanding the takedown and removal of every single monument to include the monument in front of our courthouse that also include but not limited to regulation, laws, highway names, and all those other things in our nation that is not patriotic and constitutional, and other symbols of white supremacy and every locality in our country. At some point, some may have thought that putting up these symbols would intimidate black and brown people. Question, why was it placed in the yard in front of a place where we seek to exercise our constitutional right for representation? We have had to pass the symbol of suppression and control for as long as we have entered this place seeking justice. Not anymore. It is now time for every one of you duly-elected officials, yes, all of you, to be brave, summon that inner courage, and do the right thing. Do not be fearful or afraid to represent all of us, all of your constituents, that means all of us, black, brown, and white. It is time for you to make changes for fairness and the future here in Caroline County. If you don't, the General Assembly will. They empowered you to do what's right. If you're not capable of making the decision, we will once again visit, write, call, and request that the General Assembly do. We will once again take up this cause and ask the legislation to be considered and to make a mandate for the removal of these symbols of racism and suppression. We're not going anywhere. We will continue to register people here in Caroline County and in the Commonwealth. We will continue to educate our children and put them in a position to continue this journey to make these changes for equality and fairness. There are many things that the Board should be considering: the pandemic, school education, budget, law enforcement, school taxes, and other concerns of the day. Let's be clear, it is time to move on. My family was enslaved on the North Wales ten-thousand-acre plantation in the southern part of Caroline County. I live in Dawn, about five miles from that property. My home probably existed on that ten-thousand-acre plantation, part of that plantation. We're still here and we're not going anywhere. We need the court. We, when we enter the court, we should be able to walk past a symbol without having them represent what's not right for us. White supremacy and soon-to-be-white privilege would be a thing of the past.
Mr. James, can you sum up because you're past?
Yes, sir, I sure will. Remember, the Lovings were here from Caroline, the highest court in our land, ruling their favor. I ask you to remember these words: "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and other members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to speak to you wearing two hats. The first one is your 2020 Census Chair. Just a quick update, I want you to know that the citizens of Caroline County have self-responded and beat our 2010 rate. Sixty-seven point seven percent of Caroline County citizens that own the line. That means seven out of every ten people in Caroline County have been counted. I want you to know that enumerators will be hitting the streets this month. Sheriff, beware, be ready. But it's not too late to get your census done. Call one eight four four three three oh twenty twenty or my2020census.gov. Remember, your money helps with our schools, our first responders, Bill Rhodes providing medical facilities, and the two-point-six, and now, as I've learned, another two-point-seven million dollars of COVID money to Caroline County is directly connected to our census numbers. And so now, as a citizen in Mattaponi District, whether white, mulatto, negro, African, or black, like you, I cannot change my genetic journey. It's the second thought after we determine that, that we can change. We are all equal. We have a responsibility while we journey here to make things for Caroline County. You are not erasing history, but rather making history. Your vote reflects the kind of county we are striving to be. Your vote will say that anything that represents, anything that separates us as a community is like the Berlin Wall, and it needs to come down. Our children deserve a county where all feel welcome. I, as a grandmother, deserve to have the opportunity for my three-year-old grandson to play on a sports team and not have to come home and say, Mama, what is that N-word that they're calling me on the field? I deserve to have a granddaughter that does not have to worry about someone being a pervert toward her simply because of the way she looks. And for all of us, Romans fourteen thirteen tells us, therefore, let us not pass judgment on one another any longer or put a hindrance in the way of a brother. Let us pursue what makes for peace and for mutual upbuilding, and sometimes that means to take things down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rollins.
Good evening. My name is Michael Carter, Jr. I'm a resident of the Port Royal District, and I want to express my heritage over hate and more importantly, over ignorance. In the county of Carolina, there's twenty-two monuments devoted to the Civil War, out of sixty. And in that, on those monuments, none of the brave and valiant African-American men and women who fought for their literal freedom are acknowledged. Not one of the ten percent of the Union Army, not one of the twenty-five percent of the Navy sailors who included Harriet Tubman are included on any of those markers or monuments. Yet, I live across the street from an army installation whose name after General Lieutenant General Ambrose Powell Hill, who up until maybe three years ago, I didn't realize was a Confederate general, who would have kept my family in chains to this day if he had his will and if the Confederacy had won. There's not a mention of the twenty-five men who received the Medal of Honor for their heroic fighting in the Civil War, twenty-five African-American men. More importantly, there's not a mention of the twenty-five, of the Army Corps Twenty-Fifth Regiment, the only black, all-black regiment in United States history, military history, who won not just battles, but won at the last battle in Richmond against General Lee, and ultimately overcame at the Battle of Appomattox, where Lee surrendered and the Confederacy lost. Not one mention of those individuals, not one statue, not one honor. Now, I propose that if you want to keep that statue up, let's just be fair, that if you're going to put someone up there who's terrorized and was a terrorist in this nation, brought armed in this nation, let's put up another statue of Osama bin Laden. Let's put up another statue of the Japanese Imperial Army. Let's put up another statue of the Vietcong so that we can all feel terror, not just one group of people, because this is about us. I walk, I walk by that statue every day, rode by it every day, going to Bowling Green Primary, Bowling Green Elementary, Caroline Middle, which is this school when I was here. You have a responsibility, not to put it toward the county, your responsibility was right. What's right is taking that down. It doesn't represent everybody. It doesn't represent the eleven generations of my family who've been in Virginia since seventeen forty-five, before Caroline was a county, before the United States was a nation. So I encourage you, please, do what's right.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Good evening, Chairman Seeley, Vice Chairman Thomas, members of the board. My name is Rob. I have no brief for the Confederacy nor for that statute. However, I do believe that, given the passion for the statute, that it would be put to a vote of the people, so that each individual in the sanctity of the voting booth with their conscience can make the decision, and when that decision is taken, no one...
to support the referendum, because I feel that the people of Caroline all should have a vote. I'm a very peaceful person. I understand both sides of this monument. I feel that the people should have the choice to make that decision, along with understanding fully the cost and how it will affect the taxpayers in the future, in the long run. Thank you.
Tell us your name before you go.
Carolyn Bouchard, Port Royal District. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, citizens. Actually, there's been a lot of fire on this subject, the Confederate. I can understand it. I can understand these people's view, and I'm so proud to see you all out here, and I mean that. When I look at that statue, I see something a little different. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is William Smith from Montponey, Mattaponi District. I just moved here three years ago. I'm taking a position as a veteran. I also look at what the intent as an example... ...for the tent. I'm from the United States Navy. Intent, what is my intent in wearing this shirt? My intent is to show my pride in my country. That's the reason I wear this. Now, if I was wearing the full flag and set it on fire, whole different thing. I can understand how those who want to remove the Confederate statue, I understand their position. If I lived in their shoes, went through their history, huh, the last thing in the world I wouldn't want to see is a Confederate soldier. But again, look at the history. What was the intent of that memorial? That memorial in no way glorifies the Confederacy. Nowhere on there does it glorify that. What that statue represents is a memorial to those who served this county, this state, and their nation. Yes, they lost. Yes, they lost. I'll also add in here, I'm a Yankee, so I should be on the opposite side. Bottom line is this, you have thirty thousand residents approximately in this county. Each and every one's voices should be heard. It absolutely must be put on a referendum. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, everybody. Don't stop, oh, whoa, whoa, don't stop, can I stop my time back? Y'all started it when I spoke, didn't you say my name? Can y'all restart it? Can you restart it? Thank you. All right. My name is Joanie Rollins Davis. I am a native of Caroline County, not five years, three years, eighteen, I'm thirty-nine years Caroline County, roots deep up in here, and Uncle Floyd is my representative right here. Quick, one thing about the schools, it's embarrassing that the schools got to come up here and ask for money. That's embarrassing, y'all. We got to do better. They need the money, we want to, we don't want to dumb down our kids, so y'all got to figure out something to do to get these kids some money. But I just want to let y'all know if re-education is necessary. In sixteen nineteen, the year before the pilgrims landed at Plymouth Rock, a Dutch ship deposited twenty Negroes on the wharf of Jamestown Colony in what is to become Virginia. These were the first Africans to enter colonial America, America with their exact status unknown, like Africans subsequently imported until sixteen hundred, they were probably indentured servants. However, most Africans who came to America were slaves purchased through a henuis business operation, the intentional slave trade. By the eighteenth century, Carolina and Massachusetts had an... ...this slave codes, codes, okay, bodies of law that stripped black people of all rights and reduced them to pieces of property, or chattel with their children inheriting their status. The troubling question is why the Africans were enslaved and white indenturs were not. The answer lies in the combination of racial prejudice and labor needs in early America, particularly in the southern colonies. When faced with the problem of cultivating labor-intensive crops, they turned to the international slave trade to fill their labor needs. The white colonies viewed Africans as uncivilized barbarians, and it only made it easy to fasten the chains upon them because they were no more barbaric than the Native Americans. The Africans had been stolen from richly complex and highly-developed cultures. The English settlers, of course, knew nothing about such cultures beyond that. They were neither white nor Christian and therefore uncivilized. As more and more Africans were imported into African colonies, such fears grew in the southern colonies because it was too many of them. I just finished taking a history class. It was too many of them. They made laws to keep them from congregating. Don't teach them how to read, don't do nothing. You can rape a black woman, and if the person in your house was a part of that, they wouldn't be charged, but if an outsider raped a black woman, she would be, it was a fine because she was property. When I was a little girl walking past Bowling Green, we couldn't say anything about that Confederate flag up there because you were told to be quiet. We can't be quiet no more. John Lewis said, "We got some good trouble." So my, my challenge to you all, the same way that y'all will not give the schools their money, keep that same energy when it comes to voting for that monument. Everybody else is doing it, it needs to calm down. If you can vote quickly for the schools not to get money, vote quickly to take that thing down.
Thank you, Mrs. Rollins.
Port Royal District. I'm gonna tell you, I'm here because of that statue. People got all kinds of impression about that statue, but let me tell you something. When you've been a veteran, you know what it means to wear a uniform, okay? I don't have any past judgment against that statue because my wife and a lot of my friends in this county are related, all the way going, all the way back to when we were under colonial rule. Your names appear in that book. I can't...
I can't help what happened, but I can tell you one thing. I grew up to a great part in Gooseland. Separate but equal, I started school in 1946. I had hand-me-down books. Today, I got an MBA degree. You know why? I'd never been in a classroom with white people till 1963. I was in the Air Force. I refused to go out and party. I went to Florida State. Florida State. Signed up. I went to class. I was probably one of the only blacks in that class. And let me tell you one thing. You can feel sorry for yourself, and you can always look for somebody else. Or you can get up off your knees and take care of yourself. I don't look for the white man to take care of me. But you know what I found? When he see you trying to help yourself, he hands out. He helps you. I use all my GI Bill, and my company paid for my master's degree. And I can tell you, you can feel sorry for yourself, and you're going to die feeling sorry for yourself. And I looked at the Education, Department of Education in Virginia. You know what they said? That the majority of the children in the school here were black. Whites make up 54% in the school system. Blacks make up 28%. Four top groups. Asian, they're in the 90 percentile of performance. The whites are in the 84 to 88 percentile. The Hispanics are in the 70. You know where the blacks are? They're in the 66 percentile. Now, why is that? You're in the same classroom. I didn't go to school with integration. You had integration a long time. You've been in the same classroom. Why the performance is so bad? Take a look at yourself before you start blaming somebody else. Put down your signs and do something constructive.
Mr. Henley, can you sum up? Thank you.
Chairman Seeley, Vice Chairman Thomas. My name is Dewayne Fields, and I'm speaking on behalf of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, which I'm the president of the Caroline County branch. I have a statement that I want to read, but I'm going to ask for all of those who are in support of removing the monument, if you would please stand. And if you would, I would like to acknowledge one person here today, and that's our resident Harriet Tubman. Ms. Cleo Coleman is with us today, who stands.
Mr. Thomas of everybody. I mean, I know Cleo's here.
She's going to come. She's going to come at this time and take my time. You coming?
Good afternoon, supervisors. God bless each one of you. My name is Cleo Coleman, and I live in the Port Royal District. We are supposed, I think, to be addressing just the matter of the referendum tonight. And I am vastly and hastily approaching the high order age of 90 years. And one of the very few privileges one has with old age is being able to speak what you want to say. And so, number one, in terms of this referendum, which you're asking us, allowing us to speak to tonight, I remind you as an educator that I don't see any challenged folk up there. I see leaders, every one of you. We've elected you to lead us. You don't call on us to provide referendum. That's just passing a hot potato. Let's put it where it is, okay? You are our leaders. You know what's right here, and I challenge you to do it. Now, on this matter of the memorial, the monument, let me just say to you as a citizen, a native of this country. My people have been in Caroline County since the ship brought my great-great-grandmother over from Africa. Been right here in Caroline County. And when I retired as an educator in the North, I chose to return home to Caroline County. And I appreciate the opportunities that each of you have given me to serve in the 32 years I've been retired on a number of commissions and committees serving this county. I appreciate those opportunities. I really do. But let me tell you my opinion on that monument. When I walk past those monuments, that kind of monument, my spirit is diminished, and I speak as a believer. My spirit is diminished, and my soul shrinks within me. So I call on you to do the right thing. God bless you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman.
Good evening, Board. My name is Dorante.
Thomas, Lord Thomas is my representative. I come today. Board, we come to an intersection of change. In this position, we have the opportunity to take one of two routes. One being progress, the other being maintaining the status quo. Progress is inclusive and develops a community based on the cultures present within. The status quo upholds the systems that perpetuate white supremacy, ignorance, and culture incompetence. Those systems oppress the minorities that live in the community. I am not a supporter of the referendum, Chairman. I view it as the way of ducking future accountability. Let's call it what it is, funny business. If we want to talk conservative politics, the reason that we are in a republic is because of the fact that in a democracy, the majority can oppress the minority. And the founding fathers saw that as a problem. We do not support the referendum because, as one stated, and I can't even say it like that because you can't say all white people are subordinates. But just to say, to maintain the status quo is allowing the opportunity for the historically oppressed to be in that same position. Have y'all heard me? Sorry. I'm going to start over. Show me today, and by knocking this off the agenda, show me some political will and commitment to doing what's right. Find your moral compass and do what's right, please. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I want to say good afternoon, good evening to the Board of Supervisors, Chairman Seeley, Vice Chairman Thomas. My name is Marvin Fields from the Reedy Church District. I'm a resident of Dawn. I left Dawn in 1955, moved to New York, came back home in December 12, 1988, to come back to my home. I'm a proud resident of Caroline County and a proud resident of the every we call Dawn. But my heart has been heavy the last few weeks because I'm concerned about the way we're going. And the bottom line is that sometimes we tend to vote what's political. Sometimes we have to do what's morally correct and stop worrying about politically, how is this going to affect me politically? Taking down of that monument, to me, is a moral issue. It is not political. And we've got to do what our conscience tells us to do. And as I stated last month, we are honoring a Confederacy that was traitors to the Union. Since when do we recognize we celebrate losers? The Confederate lost the war. We won our freedom. Thank God for Abraham Lincoln. So everywhere I go, I don't see where somebody that lost get a trophy. Losers get, winners get the trophy. Take that statue down.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Chairman of the Board, Vice Chairman, Board of County Supervisors. Good evening. It's a great evening, is it, today? How y'all feeling today? All right. My name is Gary Trey Taylor, newly found residence of the Madison District. I won't be before you long because all these people before me have echoed the same sentiments, gave you history lessons, gave you lesson plans to history lessons around the Confederate monument, X, Y, and Z. As you can see in my sign, it says, "Drop the monument." And that's it. Not going to sit here and keep giving you semantics and opinions and historical facts. Drop the monument. If you guys want to be One Caroline, as we all like to be, like to talk about, inclusive to all cultures, inclusive to those who call Caroline County their home, wherever they be 20, 30, 40-year residents, or wherever they be 5, 10-year residents. One Caroline should be inclusive to all cultures and people. And when one culture, if you're my brother, you're my sister, then you should be able, you should be able to feel my pain when I'm frustrated. If I feel pain and upset, you should be able to say, "Brother, I understand what's going on. Let me help you. I don't need to hear the backlash or your opinions of how you feel. You're my brother and sister. I feel a way. Help me." Mr. Forehand, we've had our conversations. I think, my good sir, you're on the clock.
Mr. Taylor, excuse me for interrupting, but you have to direct your comments only to the chair.
To the chair? Oh, I can't talk to my supervisor?
No, I know it's your boy, but you can't talk.
Okay. No, I was saying, well, Mr. Seeley, my good man, you're on the clock because you are overseeing this whole board and you are the Bowling Green Supervisor. So you can relay the message. You're on the clock. To Mr. Forehand, you're on the clock as well to remove the monument. If it's One Caroline. Y'all have a great evening. I'll see y'all later.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. No, I was.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Harris, member of the Mattipani District. I didn't intend to speak, but hearing all these comments, I feel compelled to say that, you know, when I hear that the people have a choice, my great-great-grandmother didn't have a choice when she was packed up like a sardine in a slave ship and brought from Madagascar. My mother, who's a lifetime member of Caroline County, didn't have a choice to of which school she attended because of the color of her skin. So that's what I have to say. It's moral. Do the morally correct thing. That's all I have to say. It's about morals. One Caroline.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Jeremiah Hirsch from the Bowling Green District, one of the homes closest to that monument. And as we've heard from others here that we do, you all have a moral obligation to stand in unity and equality for the residents of this county, that they are outnumbered and they're unheard, and it's your responsibility to stand up and do what's right for these people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I've got one letter that I have to read that was given. This is on a completely other topic from Bob Straight. I am a volunteer with the Fredericksburg Chapter of Virginia Organization, Fredericksburg Chapter of Virginia Organizing. And I am bringing a critical issue to your attention. The issue is nonpartisan concerns, the woeful lack of affordable housing for working poor families in Caroline and Planning District 16. Working poor families are those with a total annual household income of $24,000 to $61,000 per year. These families are hardworking and industrious, but because of the high cost of housing, are one financial crisis, job loss, reduction of work hours, medical emergency, from eviction, homelessness, and the tragic consequences of homelessness, and has on these families, the local community and relies on the local families, local communities, and local government. By affordable housing, we mean safe, well-built, practical housing that whether rent or purchased, whether a trailer or a townhouse or an apartment or a standalone house does not cost more than 30% of a working poor's family annual household income. This 30% applies whether a working poor family's annual household income is $25,000 per year, $61,000 per year, or somewhere in between. This issue is not new and was identified well before COVID and subsequent economic crisis. Had the issue of affordable housing for working poor been previously addressed, the tsunami of evictions and homelessness, we will see within the next few months would have been significantly lessened. Although the present crisis in evictions will be tragic, local government must look to the future and undertake measures to address affordable housing for the working poor and less and less their likelihood of eviction when we face the next economic crisis. You have been responsible, you are responsible to do this. The working poor families of Caroline are your constituents. You may have the authority to do this, and you cannot wait and hope the state and federal grants will save the day. Local governments must immediately take the lead and address the issue by bringing together all concerned parties, elected officials, developers, realtors, legal experts, landowners, landlords, et cetera, to determine and implement the policies and measures necessary to set the conditions within the developers and landlords can provide affordable housing for the working poor. This can be done if political will is there to do so. For further information on this and other issues facing our working poor families, please contact the Rappanik United Way and obtain a copy of the 2020 AL report. Anyone else? Because I'm closing public comment. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Public comment is closed. We will move to public hearing. Special Exception 03-2019, BSC Associates LLC, Sean Mills. I couldn't tell you. Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your first public hearing tonight is consideration of a revocation of SPX 03-2019, BSC Associates LLC, DeShawn Mills, owner and applicant. Public hearing is to consider revocation of developed reference special exception permit for the Virginia Sports Complex. The SPX 03-2019 was amended by specifically adding condition 19 as follows. A facility improvement plan for the reinvestment of capital funds for the physical development of the fields and/or other athletic facilities and the timing thereof shall be approved by the Board of Supervisors within 30 days of the date of this amendment. Upon approval of the board, an onsite sewage disposal system shall be designed, constructed, approved, and operational within 180 days of the facility improvement plan. If either the facility plan is not approved or is determined that the onsite sewage disposal option is not approvable, then the public sewer connection shall be completed by the owner within 12 months of either the denial of the plan or the onsite by the owner within 12 months of either the denial of the plan or the onsite sewer determination, whichever is applicable. The subject property is located at 8,217 County Fair Lane, Rutherford Glen, and is further identified as Tax Map 67-A-58, which contains approximately 112 acres and is zoned RP. Revocation of SPX 03-2019, together with the revocation of temporary pump and haul permit, is being considered by the board for failure to comply with the amended conditions. Just a little bit of history for the board, and you actually have a copy of the memo outlining the history of the sports complex. Sports complex was originally approved as SPX 05-2002 in January of 2003. At that time, there were plans to install an onsite sewage disposal system, which was not approved by the Health Department due to the drain field location and the type of system proposed. As such, the facility opened with a pump and haul permit from the Board of Supervisors. Over the years, there have been a number of amendments to the special exception permit. And in 2009, because of inaction towards a permanent sewage disposal solution, the Board of Supervisors added a condition which required them to connect to this public sewer or to construct an onsite sewage system. The special exception permit was amended again in September of 2014 under SPEX 02-2013. Due to change of ownership and the fact that they had not yet connected to sewer, the Board granted additional 36-month period for the new owners to connect to the public sewer system. In May of 2019, the Board of Supervisors again amended the special exception permit through SPX 03-2019, which amended the Condition 19 to include the language that staff read earlier in this report, which is where we stand today. We had the special exception permit in place. There is no public sewer connection to the site, and we do not yet have an approved onsite sewage disposal system. As well as, the board did not receive a facilities management plan or improvement plan for its consideration. You would, you also have an additional sheet. Staff went out today. We had some ENS issues onsite, some stormwater issues. You have an update related to what staff found related to the onsite issues today. And with that, I'll address any questions that the board may have.
I guess I'll, anybody, I'll start. I see we have a memo that's dated today on the stormwater BMP, which we've been over before.
Yes, sir.
That we, the BMP has been an issue for some time, as I recall. So is this, was it ever fixed, or has this just continued to deteriorate?
The BMP was, has been repaired. There are still some issues. It was noted that there's still water leaking around the pipe. It's not necessarily discharging through the pipe, but it's around the pipe. Again, this is now subject to DEQ Stormwater Authority. The county is not the approved stormwater authority for projects in the county. So this will be forwarded to DEQ. It's basically an inspection that we did to update them on the status of that facility.
Okay. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I just wanted to get this.
You also have a memo from Mr. Mills that's included as an attachment, where he has identified the cost and improvements that he indicates have been made to the facility, as well as some revenue projections related to, to events that they've had at the facility.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for Special Exception 03-2019 Virginia Sports Complex Associates LLC, Don Mills, owner and applicant. Anyone wishing to speak?
Could we let the applicant have his?
Yeah, I'm more than willing. I just wondered if there was anybody, but you, Mr. Mills, you're more than welcome to.
I wanted to just, real quickly, he's gonna address the...
Well, the applicant's got time because it's his special exception, so it's not three minutes. He's, he's got, not infinite time, but around 10. Yeah, put some...
Well, I might come back and, I just wanted to address the one issue that was brought up about BMP. And then I'm gonna let Rodney talk to you about the onsite...
Why don't you, since this is the public comment, if there's, is there anybody here for, for the public comment? Is anybody here wishing to speak for or against Virginia Sports Complex? Right, right, right. I'm waiting for public comment. I mean, the applicant's gonna get an opportunity to speak, but this is public comment. And public comment is three minutes. Yeah, let me do, because I didn't see anybody getting up, so.
Hello, my name's Terry Kokniarczek, and I work at the complex, everything. I provide refreshments and chips and things like that to all the ballplayers and everything. So at this time, that's my present employment that I have.
Can you stay, give us your name again and where you're from?
Terry Kokniarczek, and I live over in Rutherford Glen, right near the ballpark.
Can you spell that? I wasn't even close.
Neither was I.
Most people usually just go Terry and they pause, you know? But, but, so that's, that's my place of employment and been working there this summer. And that's what I'm here to say, is that if you stop the employment, then I won't have a place to work at anymore. So that's my comment for today.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kevin Myers. I also work at the complex. I'm the day-to-day director of everything that's going on. And I come before you to just ask that you still allow staff to work with us as we try to, you know, correct some of the deficiencies. I've been there a little over a year, and since I've been there, there's probably over a million dollars worth of deferred maintenance. And Mr. Mills has really been working to catch these things up. And I know we may not be moving at the speed of which you all want, but again, that deferred maintenance is like dominoes over there. Once we fix one thing, something else falls and it knocks over something else. We've been working with staff as far as trying to catch this place up. It's a jewel, but it's been, hadn't been taken care of well. We finally got a great team that we can make an impression with this place. This place can turn out to be a community impact from, from your young at old to your old and young at heart, where everyone can enjoy it. And it makes a significant community economic impact from the tournaments and stuff that we bring in on a regular basis. So as you're making these decisions, I just want you to think, give us a chance to fix it. As you say, it's been what, since 2003? We got an owner that's willing to invest this money to fix it. He's not asking for anything. He's just asking that you work with us and give us time. We're not trying to shortchange anything and not fix it correctly. That's why some of this stuff is taking time. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
So I stated my name correct?
And where you live, I mean, if you live in the county, where?
So Hubert King, Rutherford Glen. So I'm coming on behalf of you to speak as an employee and a organization that I run outside of Legacy Park. Around 2015, we started an organization, a youth development organization, and one of our biggest struggles were finding a, to maintain a facility that we were able to run our organization out of full-time. Mr. Mills has provided that from us. He brought me from Maryland to work with him, to, because he believed in the vision, of similar vision as I do as an entrepreneur, to be able to help this organization and this community grow. I graduated Caroline in 2004, and I believe the facility has been there maybe a year or two after I graduated. And anybody, I play basketball, so anybody that knows, knows that that facility wasn't even being utilized. Mr. Mills has given us the opportunity to run tournaments. We had our first high school pro day, where the kids came in, got evaluated, and got recruited by college scouts. So he's provided with so much practices for our organization, for our team, for our youth skills training, things along those lines. So this facility, even if it doesn't have a good reputation long-term, it's building a great one now. And it's something that my organization and me personally have Mr. Mills to thank for that. Thank you.
Mr. King, can I just ask you a question? What, what district are you?
Rutherford Glen, yeah, Rutherford Glen. Ladysmith?
What, okay. Where do you?
Oh, well, I'm a new, well, I graduated '04, just purchased a house in Pendleton, so.
Okay.
So I've been in Maryland since I graduated.
Okay, thank you. Answers next is Madison District. Is that way, then just shut them up quickly?
Well, well, did you register the vote yet? Right, here in Caroline? Okay, well, don't go anywhere.
How you guys doing? My name is Eugene Fry, representing the Madison District. Mr. Forehand, so I come speaking on behalf of what Hubert just mentioned, Champion Circle. Him and I started the organization in 2015. Last year, I came here approximately to about three meetings, just going over how many of the youth that we affect in Caroline County. And I just asked for, I did ask for some funds for us to have a place that we can call home, where we can come to practice and not pay out of pocket the amount that we were paying to rent the rec center here or in Ladysmith. Mr. Mills provided that home for us. Gave him our vision, and that was all it took. We held multiple events there this year, including a Black Lives Matter, actually two Black Lives Matter protests and kind of open forums, where we brought Sheriff Lippa there. We also had three African-American officers from Northern Virginia to come, streamed a live on Facebook, had our youth interact with the police, and kind of got those questions out there. So this complex is more than, I mean, it's offering more to our youth than this building, than Ladysmith and all in general, that, that quickly. The basketball courts really haven't been utilized, but he's taking the time to know our kids, to invest in our kids. And that's all that we want as a county to, you know, for us to be invested in. Hubert and I are trying to give all we have to these kids, and Mr. Mills is now on that bandwagon, and we want you guys to be on that bandwagon. So just give us time, one day at a time, you know, it doesn't manifest overnight, but we just ask that you guys give us time to continue to grow. Champion Circle is nationally known, but it's not known outside of Legacy Park because they allowed us to shout our name proudly. If you go on Facebook, if you go on Instagram, or you go to YBOO website, Champion Circle is ranked in the nation, and that's right here in Caroline County. So please give us time to save Legacy Park. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I got, I think I have 30 more seconds. I just wanted to read a quick email if I could. So this email comes from a parent. She actually wrote this to Mr. Mills. Says, "I write this email with great praise for you and your continued commitment to Caroline County. I'm the executive director of finance for Champion Circle. One of the biggest obstacles for our organization faced was not having a stable location to train and develop our players. When we traveled to tournaments, we would consistently go to gyms and face teams that practiced and developed in one location. Our organization did not have the luxury until Legacy Park provided it. Even in the face of COVID, CCB, Champion Circle Basketball, has been able to maintain a relationship with our players and conduct training, held community events, and held our first pro day at your facility. Champion Circle Basketball is a community organization. With your help, we have, we have been able to deliver just that. Words cannot express the gratitude I have for you and Legacy Park. Thank you, and we appreciate the opportunities you are creating for Caroline County." So once again, that's just one of the many kudos for Mr. Mills and his new ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Because I'm gonna close the public hearing and we will move on with the applicant. Public hearing is closed. Yeah, Mr. Mills, you can... Right, this is, as I understand, Mr., what a lost... No, it's lost, Mr. Fincham. This is just about Condition 19, is that not correct?
That is correct. It, well, it's about Condition 19 and what the board wants to do with the pump and haul permit, which is allowing the facility to operate.
Right.
Current Condition 19 allows him to put in an onsite sewage disposal system. If you revoke Condition 19, it reverts back to the previously approved special exception, which requires a connection to public sewer. That's, that's the permanent solution. The other issue for you to consider, not related to the SE itself, but is the pump and haul permit under which the facility continues to operate, and whether the board will allow it to continue to operate under that pump and haul permit until whichever permanent solution the board decides is, is completed.
Because I'm gonna narrow the scope of this. I've heard the public comment, but the, the real crux of this issue is pump and haul.
If we take the pump and haul away, they close.
Well, night, correct. Correct. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, and I've got the video of you here in March, where you told me you had the permit to put in.
I have a permit?
You said, you, you, I've got it on video with me and I can play it. You had a permit to put in a wastewater treatment.
Oh, I could play it?
I have no problem playing it.
But I mean, so you still don't have a Health Department permit to put in a drain field? That doesn't exist, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, and you've also had issues now with the storage tank that is the pump and haul office, that you're actually using for pump and haul. I understand that we had a huge leakage problem. We don't even know how long it's been going on. Is that correct?
No, sir, I'm not gonna say that's correct, that, that there was a huge issue. There was an issue. Immediately when it was brought to our attention, immediately when, when it was found, we took steps immediately.
Immediately when somebody else found it, not when you found it, but when, when, when there was a complaint made and the sheriff's office went, and then...
I don't know who made the complaint or when it was done. But it was, but it was on a Saturday, and on Monday, we took care of it. So I can't work, I mean, it's a weekend. I can't get anybody in there any faster than that.
Mr. Underwood?
That's, that's all I can say about that.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, sir.
I know Mr. King, and I know Mr. Fry, they're two fine young men that happened to be at Caroline when I was there. So this is really a tough situation because I know the work that they do for our community. But you've got an obligation.
Can I address that? Can I address that, the thing about the video here? Because last time, we did a whole bit, and I apologize, I know I'm cutting you off. But last time, I got cut off, and I didn't get to, to address a lot of accusations that were made. And I would like to address a few things, and one of them is the issue of whether or not we had a permit or not. And if that's what I said, and if I said permit, then, then that was incorrect.
You did say, Mr. Mills, you did say that you had the permit. That was one of the, can I, can I finish, please?
Yes, sir, yes, my apologies.
That's okay. We had, we looked at it. The facility. And there were a number of violations, I think you remember, Mr. Whitman spoke also about some of the violations that were there, some of them that you fixed, some that were still there. I commend you for doing that. The issue before us now is the complex, after 17 years, not all under your ownership. But after 17 years, we're still dealing with issues that really must be resolved. Must be resolved. And, and I'm torn, because it's in my district. I know what these, and I applaud you for embracing what these young men are trying to do, because there are not very many facilities for our youth to call home. So I commend you for that, but on the other hand, how long can we receive complaints and allow this to continue? So, so I'm torn today because of these young men and what they're doing, and what you're doing. You, you've embraced them, so I'll add you in the, in the mix. I appreciate it. But you put me in a bad, bad place.
I'm excited about addressing that, that place.
Okay, please.
Okay, so Ryan, if you could come up also. So last time when I was here, if I said the word "I have a permit," which I don't remember saying that, but if you've got video and I said it, I said it.
That's fine.
My understanding was that we did, and I think Mr. Whitaker is going to be able to address why I felt that way and why I expressed that to you guys, okay? Having said that, some of the stuff that he's going to talk about, actually, you know what, I'm gonna let you talk first, and then I'll come back and talk about the email from Virginia Department of Health, so.
Hello, I'm Rodney Whitaker. I'm the licensed soil scientist, onsite soil evaluator, and a resident of the Mattapanah district here in Caroline as well. As far as a permit, at 3:00 today, I spoke with Brent McCord of the Environmental Health Department, the manager there. Our issues have been resolved, and they have been very long in time. They would admit that as well. I have an email here that went to Mr. Fincham. I don't know if y'all have been privy to it or not, but they do take some, some ownership, that they did not provide information to us in a timely manner, which has caused this to drag on for a long period of time. July 2019, we had a preliminary engineering conference with the, all the representatives of the state engineer, state soil scientist, the director of the health department, and the manager of the Rappahannock Health District, along with the state soil scientist. We met on site. I had been there previous, had a proposal. We wanted to address and make sure that my proposal was going to be in accordance with the regulations of the onsite sewage disposal for the sports complex. We, we met at the time, conversations that were had. You know, there were a couple of issues here and there, pretty minute stuff. But there were no, there was no opposition to our design and our proposal as we heard it, as the engineer and myself heard it. We said we could move forward. From that date, we had to conduct soil analysis about how it takes water. It's called case add data, but it, but it's just how the soil is going to take the water to provide the amount of usage that this facility needs. Can it properly dispose of it in a safe and environmentally friendly fashion? We ran those tests, and we requested the state's report prior to design, prior to us sitting down and writing the design package. We never received this, and on March, when they were in here, you know, we, we felt, myself and the engineer, we've got an approvable design. There's been nothing that's, they've provided to us that said they're going against it. We figured if they had issues, they would have given us the report. The report was delayed. So we just pushed forward, because we knew it was a time crunch on what we had going here, because of the issues here with both the board and the extended period of time that this has taken to get done. So we pushed forward with the design. We had that design. That design was submitted, I don't know the exact date, Mr. Mills submitted it, but it sat there for a while. COVID happened. Whether it's, you know, adequate or not, it slowed things down in the state. It slowed down how the health department accepted and reviewed applications, which actually pushed it back a couple of months for getting comments back. We got a comment back, and I believe y'all saw it, it was the denial. And the wording on there was questioning the, the water permeability of the soil. So we had a meeting, a conference call, July 17th? No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yeah, July 17th, we had a meeting with the director of the environmental health section for the state of Virginia, Mr. Gregory, Marsha Deegan, who's in charge of the environmental onsite program. There were several others in the meeting as well. And we came up with a plan, and basically what it was saying was, there was a discrepancy between a soil call, and we're talking about six inches literally, 12 inches, six inches, about where we're putting this. As far as the design goes, there was no problem. We were, we were okay. But we had a little debate on some things. So we met out there and ran tests altogether. The state, the state soil scientists, the representatives from the health department, and myself on July 30th. We have the test, the samples, those results of those samples, they all coincide, everybody agrees, we're good to go. We just had, but they didn't want to, so they want to go to six inches on the small field. There's two separate fields that's going to take this sewage. So we're going to take it from a 12-inch depth, put it to a six-inch depth, at six inches of topsoil, the design is good. We had this conversation today with Mr. McCord. He's, he's given us the approval to follow through. Go ahead, make those changes, turn it back into us, and we should have a permit very soon, like relatively speaking. I can't speak for them. I mean, I would say, hopefully, within a week, we'll actually have an approved permit. But there are no issues through engineering, through soils, anything. And like I said, I know, I know they're, they're asking for patience, and I, I am as well. This project was definitely been longer than we ever anticipated it being. But we do feel like we have a very solid design for an onsite solution for, to float the entire system safely and environmentally friendly as well.
Mr. Black?
I got a couple of questions for you. So you talked about you're not sure when the permit for the drain field will be issued, it should be coming soon.
Well, I can't speak for this, I can't speak for the health department.
But you're saying hopefully in the next.
We'll have it done within 15 minutes tomorrow. We'll have our part of it done and ready to go.
Okay, so when, when you get the permit, when will you install it?
That was his contractor. I don't, I'm not the contractor. The contractor has priced out all the materials and everything, and it's just when they can get that, those supplies in. It could take, I mean, I don't want to guess, but it could take 30 or 60 days to get these parts in, because they have to be specially made. This is not a, this is not a system that's just an everyday household deal. It's, it's very involved. So, once they put the order in, it might be a 30-day lapse before they get the actual parts to put everything in.
Mr. Whitaker, once again. We're, we're back to, it should be. It should be, it should be, it should be.
Well, here's my, I can answer for the health department.
I know, and I understand COVID, many operations, people working from home, they don't have access, and.
Right.
I, I understand that piece of it. But, but we can't regulate on should-be's.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to let you know where we, how we've had this.
If they decide, and when they decide, and if they, what if they don't approve it?
It will be approved. I have 100% confidence in that.
I, I've heard that too before.
No. Well, I deal with this every day.
I understand.
And I'm aware of what the conversations are.
Airplanes fly every day, but some crash.
Yeah, but my systems can prove.
Airplanes fly every day, some crash. And, and we've been through this time and time, and, I mean, this is years.
I've been involved for a year.
I'm not, I'm not just speaking to you. You're speaking on behalf of the owner. We've been working with the owner for years, with promises that have not been kept.
Yeah.
And like, my heart's with the kids.
I can speak to the fact, the previous owners, from when I was an employee of the Virginia Department of Health, and we had these same issues, and we were requested to come out to look at the site at that time. And at that time, that owner didn't even know where his property was, so.
But I'm not concerned with that right now.
Well, I mean, you're saying, you're saying we're addressing this whole business of owners.
Mr. Mills, and what he's promised, and the promises that haven't been fulfilled. That's where we are.
Well, Mr. Mills has done everything in his power to get this approved. There is nothing that this man has not done. Anything that has slowed the time has been on my part or the state of Virginia Health Department.
Mr. Sealy?
COVID just happened, okay.
Mr. Black?
I guess, I guess for me, I think this, this board in general has tried to be as pro-business as humanly possible. And the problem I have is I've got an, I've got an email that comes from our building official, I believe. This office was notified on August 3rd, 2020, that the sewage disposal system was not operating properly, resulting in discharge of sewage onto the ground in a nearby stream. In violation of Chapter 92.4 compliance required for occupancy of the Code of Caroline County, records from the Department of Public Utilities indicate that the last time this system was pumped was February of 2020. If I've got a sewage disposal system.
There was this whole thing called COVID, and nobody was at the facility for months?
So you don't realize that it's overflowing? You, you didn't go to the facility?
But to say that it wasn't done since February.
It says it right here.
COVID, I'm not arguing with you, but what I'm saying is in March, the place we shut it down, we didn't do anything in March, April, May. A large portion of June is when we started back up, and we're talking about, you know, a month, month and a half later.
A month?
So that's not atypical for, for a system that's that size, for the amount of traffic that we have. That's about the time.
So you were never at your own business for six months, four months?
No, but there's four people there for a system that could hold 10,000 people. So, yeah, there were people there mowing the grass who might have used the restroom a couple of times a day. But there's no concessions going on, there's no, I mean, we literally have somewhere between, I would say on the low side in a month, 4,500, to the high side, 8,000 people in a month there. So if you've got four people there in March, April, and May, you don't need to pump that system. I mean, you can go like this with me all you want to, but you don't have to pump a system when there's four employees on site.
I would venture guess that the.
What would they pump out? If no one's there to use the facility, what would they be pumping out?
Our schools had no surge during that time either. Schools are set up to public utility. No, but it's, it's a usage, you know.
I, I don't know what we.
When, when did you pump before then?
Pardon?
When did you pump before then?
It was in February, that's correct.
So you pumped in February?
Yes.
And your system overflowed in August, and you're saying nobody was there?
Nothing happens in February, because we're a baseball facility. We didn't have basketball or anything else going on, so nothing happens. There's literally four or five people there.
Just work with me for a second, please.
Sure. I, I apologize, I'm a little.
You, I understand. But you pumped your system out in February, and you're saying now that your, your system is, is capable of handling 8,000 people a month, because you have a lot of events there. But for whatever reason, in these four or five months, with only four people there, your system overflowed?
No, sir, that's not what I meant. I apologize if I didn't explain that properly.
Well, that's what, that's what the email says, is your system overflowed, and how did that happen?
Right. So I'm trying to explain why in February, March, April, May, there's no reason to pump it, and really, June either, because June is when we opened back up.
I'm giving you all of that. 8,000 people didn't come between February and August.
So you have an empty, basically an empty take since February. In June, I don't know when it was, it was sometime, you know, early to mid-June is when we opened back up. Now, we opened back up at a limited capacity. We weren't at full capacity when we opened back up. So we opened back up, so we would go a month and a half, let's say, half of June and July, and the system overflowed, and we had somebody come out, literally scheduled that day to come out, that Monday to come out. And on Saturday is when it was brought to our attention that it was.
Okay, you, you fell in to kind of work with my logic, and it's the last time I'm even trying.
Okay, I apologize, I don't understand the question I got.
8,000 people a month is what you said your system can handle, right? That's what you expect? And, and with 8,000 people, you pump it once a month? Or every other month?
If there were 8,000 people coming every single month, it would be at least once a month.
Okay, so between February, when you pumped it out, which is what you said.
Yes, sir.
And August, when our people say it overflowed, there were not 8,000 people in those two months, right?
We probably got right at 8,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, right at the end of July.
But you just said you shut it down for COVID.
Right, but when we opened back up, now July has started to be
8,000 people.
A legitimate, yeah, a legitimate month was, our first real month back in business was July. Full month back in business. So, February, March, April, May, June, we were either not open at all or open on a very limited capacity. July is the first month. At the end of July is when something happened. And by the way, we immediately told the four different people, two county folks, two state of Virginia folks, what the plan was to rectify the situation. We mowed all the grass down, we dumped 150 pounds of lime in the area, and had somebody come out that day and pump the tank out.
Is there an alarm on that system when it's full?
I don't think so.
No alarm, okay.
And also, we set up a system now where every day, we have a log book, every day that.
Oh, it's supposed to be, is there supposed to be a login sheet for, for checking? Well, that's a new wrinkle. So there's, it should be checked. Yes, please.
See, Mr. Mills, it just, it just feel, it just sounds like there's a breakdown in multiple places. And I want to work with you, because but you're almost giving me no choice. Because if someone else comes here and opens up a business and does not follow the regulation, I'm gonna shut them down, I'm gonna vote to shut them down. I think that's the only principal thing, treat everybody the same, and give, we've given you multiple opportunity. We are pro-business, but you're on the edge of the cliff, and the wind is blowing 100 miles an hour. And I don't think I can save you as much as I want to.
So, back to.
Mr. Sealy, can you just answer that? There's no alarm.
That's correct. There's a, when the original permit was put in place, Doug Septic Service was doing the pump and haul. They were the licensed and bonded and approved through the board of supervisors through that permit. So there's a daily log that's supposed to be kept, that somebody checks that every day. When it needs to be pumped, they call the, the service company to have that done. They're supposed to have a retainer of a company on service 24 hours a day in case there's an emergency. So in this particular case, the last time it was pumped was February 20th. There's two 5,000 gallon tanks, so they hold 10,000 gallons. The last time it was pumped, we don't know if it was full and just pumped down 3,000 gallons, which a truck typically holds. So there's still a 6,000 gallon tank. You know, going several months, you figure 10 gallons per person on site would use water. So if you've got 80, 8,000 people at 10 gallons, that's 80,000 gallons in a 10,000 gallon tank. So that tells me that 70,000 gallons went down the stream. So they should have been checked daily. We got a call from dispatch. They got an anonymous call. They got an anonymous call into dispatch. I don't know if they know who it is. They called dispatch and said that there was a sewer smell and sewer leaking out of a tank. Dispatch called my on-call staff. They responded out there and found that there was a leak. They contacted a gentleman on site that was working for Mr. Mills, Mr. Tony Evans, and reported it to him. He reported that to his sup, my staff reported it to his direct supervisor, who I talked to early Monday morning. When I found out about it, it was about 7:30 and I went straight to the site. When I got there, the tank was still leaking. So my staff was over there about 4:30 on Saturday. So when I found the issue, um, I found Mr. Evans, didn't realize it was the same gentleman until we started speaking that my staff had spoke to on Saturday. He said his supervisor was on the way in. I called Mr. Whitman back to let him know what had been found over there. He had gotten a phone call as well. So told him that it was leaking. Um, I took videos of the stream and everything. You could see where the grass has actually died because it's been leaking for quite some time. It wasn't a, a short leak or a shorter amount of time, in my opinion. The decomposant of the soil in the area where it was running was black. The stream had gray water running in it and I've got pictures of that. At that point, I came back to the site and met with, uh, Mr. Whitman. And we spoke to the manager on site, Kevin, and, and talked to him about that. And I was informed that the pump hall truck was on its way and should be there within the next hour or so. I then found out the next day that the truck never showed up and didn't show up until Tuesday. So I asked, well, did you call your on-call service provider of Doug Septic? He said, no, sir, we did not. And I'm like, well, you know, he said, I contacted a company I've got a relationship with to get that done. And I'm like, but they haven't showed up yet. Well, I didn't know till Saturday. I said, I understand this, sir. I said, but you have a responsibility to make sure you're not polluting the environment through your permit the Board of Supervisors has issued. I said, you should have called your on-call, um, pump and haul company that has a requirement to show up to be able to pump that within two hours. Just come to find out that wasn't done. So that day we agreed to let, on Monday, agreed to let Drain Field Solutions to pump that because it needed to be pumped because of the issue. I further had found out that, um, that I had a phone call, I guess now about five or six weeks ago with Mr. Mills. He had called to want to know could he change his pump hall contractor? I said, we could. I just needed a request from him to be able to present to the board for an amendment of his pump hall permit. I just received that, um, last week that was put into your packet, um, last Wednesday so that you have that. So that was just approved then, um, for a temporary permit until tonight, um, so that he could have his, his program for the weekend until the board could have a decision of what they wanted to do. So there is no alarm because it was supposed to be a daily check.
Mr. Mr. Sheba?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Black, Mrs. Long has a question. She's been.
Sorry, I was gonna ask, can, should we let Mr. Mills finish his, his, whatever he was gonna share before we ask questions? If not, I'll ask mine now.
I think we're closing in on the end of explanation.
My, my question, Mr. Mills, is if you get your permit for your drain field, your commercial drain field in two weeks, do you have the money to install it?
Definitely.
And how long would it take to install it?
Well, we had the actual people here, the contractor that was here, but she couldn't stay as long as, you know, as it's taken tonight. So she was here to address that. I don't build it. I don't know how long it takes to order, order everything. We had. Pardon?
You should, the designer should have an idea and who's gonna install it?
Who, who is the installer?
Drain Field Solutions. It's gonna be the installer. It will take from, uh, the time the parts come in, start to finish, will take about a week to, to be complete. Once, once parts are in, design's approved, parts are in, it will take them about a week to install it.
You do realize that the fact that you've contaminated one of our waterways really irks me to, that was just careless. You've got staff. You gotta direct them. I, I can't really understand how it went and until the drain field gets in, are you gonna install an alarm? And are you gonna send a copy of your login for that tag being checked every day for Mr. Sheba?
We have a login book now and it's checked every single day, logged in, who inspected it, what time, what the results were. And I, I'm not.
I'm not making excuses because I know it's on me to know that stuff. I don't know every regular.
That there is to know. I did not know that.
But you knew, you knew you had a pump and haul.
It's on me.
Mr. Sheba? Mr. Chairman, um, I, I got one question. Cause we saw something from the Department of Health. When you have a, uh,
when, when you have like sewer leaks into a stream, isn't that become a DEQ issue?
DEQ and the Health Department were both notified. Uh, DEQ has an open investigation right now.
And DEQ usually doesn't play nice.
Typically not, but I don't know what their response is to this. Um, they haven't contacted me directly. So as far as I know, if you go online, it shows us an active, uh, active, uh, report, investigation.
So Mr. Mills, do you have the money for the drain field and the fine that DEQ is gonna be giving you?
Well, I don't know what the fine would be. So I mean, you know, if it's a hundred million dollars, the answer is no. Okay. I, I.
I, I have no.
But I know that I, I know that that very day I talked to them myself and told them what our plan was to rectify with mowing the grass down, putting out 150 pounds of lime, you know, the whole thing that we had. And, and by the way, we're, we're forgetting some of the things that happened that day. Like Mr. Shavel said, it, the people didn't come out till the following day. A, um, a tropical storm that came up that day. And I literally got a phone call saying, we cannot go out there in this wind and I don't, I wasn't down here for that storm. But I was told we were on the way and we can't do it. And that's from the pump and haul folks. So we're, we're leaving out a couple of details there that, you know.
Mr. Mills?
And I still would like to read, part of the reason for the big delay is right here and nobody is saying it. But I haven't even.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, if we were to temporarily shut you down, what would be the impact?
The place would probably never reopen and we would turn it into something totally different, a warehouse and a farm. It just can't be done. I, I have pumped in there, you're talking about millions of dollars that I'm on the hook for. Um, I've done everything that I can think of to address every issue as quickly as possible. Some things that you guys don't know about because you don't get a complaint or whatever, because we've taken care of it in advance. But like Kevin said, we take care of one thing and something else happens. And it is literally a daily struggle that we are trying to take care of things and at the same time provide a place. Literally tomorrow, there's gonna be 500 to 600 people there playing ball in those fields. Okay? So we've got to maintain that. Imagine having 600 customers at your facility tomorrow and having to take care of the customer service issues that go on with that. Make sure the fields are ready to play, whatever is going on, and also have to take care of all these issues as well. Okay? These guys, I, I promise you, Kevin works 120 hours most times. Okay? I can't believe that his wife has not hunted me down and, uh, put a hurt on me. Okay? These guys are working their tail end off to get things done and.
We're not questioning any of that.
Right. So I just don't want people to think that we're not working. I'm not sitting up here promising something like, um, Mr. Whitman said, and you know, not doing anything about that. I'm not an absent owner like everybody else.
Mr. Mills, with all due respect, none of the board members have said that you haven't done anything. None of the board members have not said that you put endless hours in your staff. Nobody has said that. I told you, I know these young men and I know their character. So nobody is saying that. But at the end of the day, the issues still remain and they're in violation and that's the issue.
Correct. And this thing should have been done. And this is why I wanna read this one, like three sentences to you, one little paragraph to you.
That's fine. Chairman, could I make a motion that, that we defer this public hearing for 60 days?
I would like to hear what he wants to read, actually.
Mr. Mills, read your three or four sentences.
So this is from Brent McCord, uh, Virginia Department of Health. And it's an explanation. It's an email that was sent, I think, to Mr. Fincham and Ms. Zek, um, back on July 14th. And there's a lot of stuff here. I'm just gonna read what's pertinent to what we're talking about here. So the health department Mr. John Ritter and Mr. Rodney Whitaker, O S E, the V D H Soil Scientist Site and Soil Evaluation Report. Provide Mr. Ritter with the V D H P E comments of the initial review of the proposed plans in a timely manner. Not having either of these items affected the ability of the P E to design the system and properly address the items in two correspondences. And this is where I was here before and we thought that everything was okay because Department of Health didn't tell us anything to the different. Now they're saying, we messed up. We didn't send all the stuff to you that we should have sent you a year ago. So that's why I'm standing before you saying, you're a hundred percent right. This thing should have been put in. I want it put in. I'm paying for stuff out there that I wouldn't have to be paying for if this system was put in. So I'm on your side. We're saying the same thing. We want it done. I'm not sitting here trying to delay this. It doesn't make any sense for me to delay this. I don't like getting brought in here and calling the carpet about this stuff. I don't want a, a leak to the system or something like that because of something that was, that was overlooked. I don't want that. All I'm asking for is to be able to, now that we actually have everything from the Department of Health and all we have to do is change six inches. We order the parts and we put this stinking thing in and y'all don't ever have to see me again. That's what I'm asking for.
Mr. Chairman, could I restate my motion one more time? Once, once we, once we stop his pumping hall, it's over.
Right.
I'm only, I'm only on your side because when that project first started, it was in the district that I represented. The project didn't move, but our lines moved. So I'd like to eventually see something come to fruition.
I wish you guys would come out there on the weekend.
My last shot is 60 days from now. So.
Like I said, I don't know how long it takes to order parts.
Don't stop talking. Don't talk anymore.
But.
Don't talk anymore. I'm, I'm gonna withdraw my motion and let him kill you. Okay? So I'm gonna make a motion that we defer this, this, uh, pub, uh, decision for 60 days. If it's not, I will make a motion to, 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 um, remove and, and revoke the special exception when it comes up. So if all these things aren't done in 60 days with, which Mr. Sheba will let us know, we don't even, we don't even have to have a public hearing because we just deferred, uh, we just, you don't revoke it then.
Tom's a friendly amendment. Um, if we could issue a new pump hall permit to the new owner, um, new regulations are out there.
Only, only for 60 days.
That's correct. That's fine.
Mr. Thomas.
Oh, yes, sir.
Just, just to confirm, you are, your motion does not continue the public hearing, it just defers the decision.
My, my, my motion is to defer the decision on this action for 60 days, with the action is the revocation of his pump and all permit and all the other things, or his special exception. So yes, not to, not to move the public hearing or continue the public hearing, which we've already closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get Kevin? To Ben? Can you recognize Mr.?
Mr. Whitman?
If I could just interject something. I talked to the contractor and, uh, with Floyd's idea of 60 days. Once this gets approved, once the contractor signs the contract and then orders these parts. And it's like Rodney and Mr. Mills said, this is not an off-the-shelf product. So they get the order. It's a huge system. The contractor or the, uh, the, the manufacturer, this, this may not be done in 60 days. By the time we order it, the thing's built, because it has to be built for this project and then get delivered. It could be a little longer than 60 days in my conversation with the contractor today. So I just didn't want us all, because we've been kicking this around for a lot of years. I, I think they got a good handle on it now and I talked to Drain Field Solutions, but they had to leave. They had another engagement. But it's gonna, I see longer than 60 days, probably 90. And I, I just wanted to make sure because we come back in 60 days and we go, hey, you're not done. And, and then we're going, well, we had to order the parts. Well, the manufacturer's not gonna make it until they have a signed contract. They're not gonna, the contractor's not gonna sign the order until there's a permit in hand and they have a contract with Mr. Mills for the exact price.
Mr. White.
I mean, in 60 days, we could review it.
Could I ask you a question?
Sir.
But 60 days from now, we would have that order placed and at least they would know.
Right. But, but I heard Mr. Tom.
The, the system is ordered and it's going in.
Right. But I heard Mr. Thomas say.
Mr. Mills, I'm gonna just caution you because you told Mr. Thomas that you were done talking. I'm just gonna caution you.
Step away from pulling back my motion.
But I, I'm just saying, I think 90 days is more realistic by the time we get a contract, order it, pay for it and get it in.
Mr. White? You would, in 60 days, we would expect to see some substantive progress.
Right. Some movement, some signed contracts and hey, the, the manufacturer's.
Not gonna build this on a, on just paper.
Right.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
So even in 60 days, he's, he's still have to have, he's still have to have his contract in hand. He's still have to have some construction in hand. All right. No, I'm sticking.
And in order.
Yeah, I'm sticking with 60.
And it might be on a flatbed on its way here for all we.
Sticking with 60. If it's on a flatbed, just come in here and 60 days will say, okay.
While you're ahead, Mr. Underwood has said he would second your motion if you will.
Oh, I said I'm sticking with 60.
Okay.
Fair.
I, I'm, I'm, Mr. Black, I know you just turned your mic on. That's okay. So we're, we're all in all done.
Whatever you say. Whatever you say, I'm sticking with 60. You can go ahead and say it.
Six, 60 is fine.
Well, yeah. Mr. Thomas, restate your motion.
Ben's in the back, but I wanna hear what Mike says first.
Are you going to amend that to require a new pump and haul permit under the current owner's name?
Yes, that's, that's what Mr. Sheba said.
There is no, the, the, the pump out provisions are spelled out and we can't say we didn't know we were supposed to pump it out.
Right. Thank you. I will, I will restate my motion one more time. That we defer action on revoking special exception 032019 for 60 days. And issue a temporary pump and haul permit for those same 60 days. At which time, Mr. Mills will come back and see us and not say a word, but show us paperwork that has his commitment. If he does not show that paperwork, I will make a motion. Well, part of my motion now will be, my motion will be to revoke everything he has in 60 days.
Do we even need to take action?
I gave him the pump and haul.
Do we even need to take a vote?
We have to take action because we have to give them, he has to have a new pump and haul provider. So that at a minimum, we have to act on.
But part of, part, part of my motion is if he doesn't do anything, we're gonna kill this thing in 60 days. Cause there's no impending, uh, you know, event that needs to happen, right? We need to light a fire under whoever's doing what. And you're gonna make it happen.
The murder hornets are coming from.
I know. Covid phase two.
All right. We have a motion in a second. I think discussion's over. All in favor of motion signify.
Mr. Sealy, I have something I want to let you say.
Mr. Black?
I'm sorry. I'm, I will vote, I will vote with you, but Mr. Mills, it's, it's getting tired. It, it's getting tired. You've been in front of us three times and we, and believe it or not, we really are trying to be as pro-business as possible. But it's when the, when the business in front of us over and over and over again. You know, when we gave the last time, correct me if I'm wrong on this, because I don't wanna make any accusations. When we, we revoked the whole sewer thing, we were gonna put turf fields in, correct?
That's still in the plan. But I'm not gonna do that.
Anyway, yeah, 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 right.
Mr. Mr. Black, I'll let you have your comments.
I'm, I'm done.
I'm gonna change my motion if he says another word.
I have a, all in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
We'll see you in 60 days.
Thank you very much. Good night.
That was painful. All right. I'm fine with that. Yeah. We're gonna take a short 10-minute break in real 10 minutes, Mr. Thomas. Earth minutes? No, earth 10 minutes.
Mr. Fry?
Um, next on the agenda is agenda item number six, special exception 062019. Uh, James Olaf Owner Applicant Request, Special Exception Permit in accordance with Article 17, Section 13. And Article 4, Section 5.2 of the Carolina Zoning Ordinance on Tax Map 85-A6. Mr. Fincham? Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next public hearing is SPEX 062019, uh, as the chairman stated. They're requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article 17, Section 13, which is the standards for special use permits, and Article 4, Section 5.23 of the Caroline County Zoning Ordinance on a portion of Tax MAP 85-A-6, containing approximately 3.1 acres. The subject property is located at 23,0134 Panola Road, Ruth or Glenn, in the Mattapani Voting District. The requested special exception permit is for a special events facility, and a 2030 comprehensive plan designates this area as agricultural preservation. The applicant, uh, is requesting the S E for approximately 3.1 acres for a special events facility on the, uh, tax map that was referenced. The, the property currently has a barn, uh, which was permitted as an agricultural structure that was used for, um, the wedding for Mr. Olaf's son and now, um, daughter. That barn is the structure that is proposed to be used for the, the special events facility and is subject to this request. You have a G D P in your staff report, which identifies the, the 3.1 acres, which includes the, the driveway, um, uh, from Panola Road up to the property. This application actually spent several months at the Planning Commission. Uh, the Planning Commission held its public hearing, uh, at its October 24th meeting. There were a number of, uh, public speakers at that, I believe it was 14, uh, with roughly seven in favor and seven opposed to the application. The majority of those in opposition, the, the concerns related to, uh, the additional traffic that would be generated by the facility, uh, safety concerns related to the road, um, and concerns about, about it not, uh, protecting the rural character, uh, of the community in that area. The Planning Commission deferred action on this several times, and ultimately, at its June 25th meeting, uh, the Planning Commission forwarded this request to the Board of Supervisors with the, uh, conditions that are contained in your staff report. There are also a number of attachments that were included in your staff report, um, including the minutes of the Planning Commission meetings, uh, that we normally, uh, provide Board for consideration. If the Board has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those questions, or wait until the end of the public hearing.
One, one quick question for Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Fincham, in our, in our board packet, we have a, a traffic count done by VDOT that was done in April?
There was a traffic study that was done by VDOT, yes, which identified some signage improvements to the road. Yes, sir.
But the study was done in April, in the midst of basically our lockdown, so it's really not a fair traffic study, is it?
Yeah, the date of that was April, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No further questions. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing for special exception 062019, James Olaf Owner Applicant is now open.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mac Elliott, um, formerly of the Mattapani and Bowling Green Districts, and now, as my wife says, we're in the Hanover District, so I do apologize for that. But I do am employed in Caroline County, um, as is my wife. When I was asked to speak for Mr. Olaf, uh, about the new venue that was planned, uh, the first thing that came to mind was, it's been a privilege and a pleasure, the last 15 years, to be associated with Caroline County, and I became associated with Caroline County through James Olaf and Mattapani Springs. That association can be summed up in one word, and that's simply perfection. Um, that's what Jim stands for. That's what Mattapani Springs brings to Caroline County. Being good at something is pretty easy. Something's given to you. Being great at something, it's a little bit more difficult, you have to earn it. And more importantly, being great means that you don't ask for any rewards for it, and that sums up Jim as well. He's been great at delivering perfection for Caroline County, and all you have to do is Google it. If you Google Mattapani Springs, or you Google Caroline County, they're almost synonymous, and the accolades that have come with it are right there, right there in, in the print. And the accolades aren't from paid advertisement, they're from people that do this for a living, that have no interest in Caroline and no interest in Mattapani Springs. Virginia's for lovers, Indy Golf Magazine nationwide. And what that's brought to Caroline is more business, more jobs. Some of the people that are gonna be across the aisle tonight and against this venue that lived on Panola Road have worked for Jim, or their children have worked for Jim. He has created jobs for this community, one of the most important things that we can do. More importantly, he's brought in business not just from the rest of the Commonwealth to see how close and how wonderful Caroline County is, he's brought in business from all around the world, exposed Caroline County for what it is, a great and fantastic rural community that also offers world-class facility, and that's what he's gonna continue to do. If Jim has any one flaw, it's quite simply this, he's not good at self-promotion, so I'm gonna give a little bit of that tonight. He is a perfectionist. He demands perfection from every project that he does. So if that's a concern for this Board or for this community, it's not a concern at all. All you have to go out there and just see the facility or see anything else that goes along with it. But Jim has also given back to the community, and I know I'm getting ready to run out of time, so I'm gonna hit it really quick. He's delivered this through being meticulous with his planning and anything that goes into it. In addition to that, the accolades that you will find on the line and in, anywhere else, he has also given the families of Caroline, the high school of Caroline, given of himself to any of the charities, and donated his facilities to free, as free, to local charities here and around. Thank you so much for your time.
Hey, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, sir.
No, thank you for your comments. Whoever comes to the mic first is, who gets to speak?
The sheriff has directed me. I'm Danny Carter, um, in Mr. Black's district, going west end of the county. Uh, I'm here in support of Mr. Olaf's, um, request for the event venue. It was interesting, I had an opportunity to go out to where this, uh, event barn is, and I stood on that vista that, uh, is quite impressive, and I thought my mind, my grandfather stood there when he bought that farm in 1911, and then sold it in 1919, when he moved to the west end of the county. But when you look at a partnership or somebody starting a business in Caroline, or in any county, for that matter, it's a partnership, it's a partnership with the community and the owner. And I look at, through the years and the time that I've known Mr. Olaf, I first met him 25 years ago, when he gave it his time to coach his son, and my son, by default, on the same team, in Little League at the Beaver Dam Road to Club. And then I've watched him through the years, as he developed businesses and, and built the golf course that, uh, Mac referred to, and it is a world-class golf course. I remember the first year that it opened. I had run golf tournaments to benefit the Little League program here in Caroline for many, many years, close to 20 years. But the first year that Mattapani Springs opened, uh, we did it and held it there, mainly because his staff made it very receptive, gave us a great price, it was a good fundraiser for the Little League program, but people were so excited about it, I had them calling me on the morning of the tournament. We got an 8:30 or 9 o'clock tee time, and I got them calling me at home at 6:30 wanting to play in it. So what they saw was a great venue. Mr. Olaf in himself has been class act. The partnership that he's proposing for the county and his venue there is, I can only imagine that it would be an asset to the community, for the county, and for everybody concerned. I do appreciate the opportunity to, to convey my feelings, and I trust that y'all will approve this for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to share my opinion. My name is Laura Gordon Strickland, I'm in the Mattapani District. I'm here this evening as both an event industry professional and as a 32-year resident of Panola Road, in an attempt to raise awareness of the concerns of myself, my family, and many of those residing on and/or traveling through Panola regarding this special application permit request. I'm a professional wedding photographer with over a decade of experience photographing events, both domestically and internationally. With my background in events and full understanding of all that occurs throughout event management, numerous issues arise concerning this operation of a new venue. I urge you to review my letter, where I've addressed several concerns as an event professional, and with that being said, I stand for things that I believe in. On July 8th, 2006, I found out that one of my childhood best friends had been drinking and driving on the road where I call home and died at the scene. There isn't a day I drive by that area where the tree once stood where he lost his life that I don't think about him. His death forced me to view life completely differently and made me realize how short our lives are and how important it is to count our blessings. We are so blessed and fortunate to live in such a beautiful, serene community where we are surrounded by our family on Panola. As you ma, as you know, Panola is not the easiest road to navigate, and safety is our primary concern. This evening, though, I would like to address another topic. I'm 100% for the betterment and the growth of our community. I've always been, sorry, I'm very passionate about this. Growing up in a rural area where I feel like you may not be able to prosper the way that you truly want to because of your locality, I feel like I've done that, and I feel like I know events like the back of my hand. I don't think that this venue is gonna produce the revenue that might be proposed. I put together an example of a best-case scenario regarding the revenue this type of business would provide, and you can review those calculations in the packet that you've received. I just wanted to point out that if this event venue was fully booked, all 70 events that is proposed to be at this place, at a premium rate for all events in peak season, the max revenue that Caroline County would receive is $864.50. You can review those, I don't have time for, to go through that. As I mentioned, I speak up for what I believe in, and if we can save one person and save anyone, anyone that's driving to on Panola Road, living on Panola Road, is 800 and something dollars worth someone's life. I just, that's the question that I have for you guys. Just please review those numbers and carefully consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strickland.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Ryan Strickland, I reside on Panola Road as well, Mattapani District. I have attended the previous planning and development meetings, um, and reviewed the current packet, uh, from back to back, and speak here today, still in strong opposition of the event venue on Panola Road. I provide you with the following issues, concerns, unanswered questions that warrant response. So Mr. Olaf's golf property advertises event hosting on its website. Why can't event, events be held at the golf course? Is there really this great need for an additional event space within a quarter mile of a place that already has event spaces? What is the current, current business plan for this event business? Example, jobs, revenue, cost per event, types of events, catering, et cetera. What are the estimated anticipated earnings from this, from this event space? Furthermore, keep in mind the current gross revenue is .0019 on the dollar. Where will guests stay? Nearest hotels, nice, that are nice, are in Richmond and Fredericksburg, um, so people staying, coming in for the wedding would be providing services to outside counties. Same with, uh, catering, DJ, video, flowers, we did a, did some research, and most of those types of vendors are outside of Caroline County. Are there any plans to provide any additional services other than the building venue, bathrooms at a later date, such as like a bridal suite, cottages? What type of benefits could residents of the road gain from this venue? By all accounts, Mr. Olaf and the golf course have made, made no effort to better their community, specifically Panola. Road cleanups, just up and around the golf course, uh, was strong opposition to the internet petition that we passed around that I think Floyd's familiar with. And then how much experience does Mr. Olaf have in luxury event planning and weddings coordination? Who will his target clients be? What type of budgets overall are they seeking to host? And then on the traffic issue, VDOT is, the VDOT study is inaccurate and inconclusive. Uh, as Floyd pointed out, the study was performed during COVID, um, so travel was low, exposure, uh, exposed, sorry, exposed severe speeding issue, if anything, on the road. I think it was 65, what is, it was tracking in a 40 mile per hour speed zone. And then assuming alcohol will be present at these, these events, will there be an increased police presence on the road, DUI checkpoints, et cetera? What about our families and children? We plan on starting a family soon. Uh, we have young nieces, nephews, cousins who live on the road, frequent the road, are getting, ready to get learner's permits themselves, um, so I think we need to think about those individuals as well. Um, and then just really quick, uh, with the exception of three people that are in favor of the petition, none, none in favor live on Panola Road. If you look at the petition that we submitted in the packet, um...
Can you sum it up, because your time is up?
Yeah, the, the people that signed our petition and against it live on Panola Road. If you look at the address, the majority of them live on Panola Road, so...
Thank you, Mr. Strickland.
That's it. Thank you.
My name's Bobby Williams. I live in Mattapani District. Uh, I've talked with a few of you, uh, in more detail earlier in the week. I live very close to this event site, very close. My land is on the platte. I'm right next door, I'm 500 feet away. No one's gonna be impacted more than me. I agree with what these people say. My feeling is, I'd like to see the rural preservation zoning remain in effect. I think most of the people in Panola feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I'm Moser, Bowling Green District. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I can speak on what Mac Elliott had said earlier about the nonprofit organizations. I'm currently the president of Humane Society with Kevin Whitman, and I can tell you that, uh, we provide a service to the citizens of Caroline for their animals, and we supply quite a, quite a bit of money and funds for people that can't afford vet bills and food and stuff of that nature. And, uh, the, Brenda and Mr. Olaf have been generous enough to, uh, host our organization at their facility, uh, at low cost, which is max, maximize our profits for the Humane Society, and, and made us effective within the community, uh, so we do appreciate it and give them credit for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moser?
I'm Ray Williams, and I am from the...
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Ray Williams, and I am from the other side of the county, but I am here to speak in favor of this venue. I don't know if any of you have had the chance, and I think it would be an injustice to vote on this issue if you've never seen this particular facility. Having been to a number of venues, because I have a number of children and grandchildren that have been married in them, this is one of the most beautiful that I've ever seen. You wouldn't want to put it in an industrial area or even in a business area. For the people that are going to use it, they would like to be and see what you see when you stand in this particular location. So I would urge that you at least take a look at it before you make a decision. If you haven't, I think you're doing an injustice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Chair Seeley, Vice Chair, Mr. Thomas. Thank you for letting me come forward again this evening. I'm here to speak in behalf of the event barn. My family moved to Panola Road in 1965. The dynamics of the road haven't changed very much. It's the same road. The edges are more worn. There are a lot more ruts in it. VDOT needs to come down there and take care of it and the sides of it and the gullies around it. But it hasn't changed. I learned to drive on that road, and it is well-traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. I have spoken to Mr. Lippa about possibly getting the numerous logging trucks that tend to come down our road and seeing if we can't stop them using it as a cut-through. But I'm here in support of the event barn because it could have been subdivisions, it could have been trailer parks, but instead, we have kept the rural preservation of Panola Road, which is one of the prettiest roads in Caroline County. A lot of the complaints and letters that you have in your packet are from people who not so much complained about the road as actually defamed Mr. Oliphant's character. I'm sure you have a packet full of letters. Some of the people that have complained about the event barn actually are from my family, and so we have a dissension among us, but we agree to disagree also. But I wish you would come and view the event barn and see what you think, because it is an outstanding facility, and it's on a beautiful location. And I thank you for taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carson.
I'm Kevin Whiteman from the Bowling Green District, and I want to say that Mr. Oliphant did the inspections at the Mattapanai Springs when he built it. Like Scotty said, our Humane Society, and not only did he do it at a reduced cost, he did it at no cost. Our casino nights, he provided all the eats, him and Brenda. We raised a lot of money that gets reinvested back into the county for people that can't afford dog food, cat food, vets' appointments. And everything he's done has been first-class. I don't think we've had very few incidents at Mattapanai Springs, and I don't anticipate we'll have any at this venue. And I think, like Mr. Williams said, people are looking for that rural venue. That's what they want. So I support Mr. Oliphant, and I would hope we pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteman. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello. My name is Valerie Gordon, and I live on Panola Road. I live about a mile from the actual venue and about a half a mile from the golf course. I'm 65 years old. I've lived here for 42 years. Approximately 25 houses were on that road when we moved there, and now there are 68. And I'm speaking not only of Panola Road, but they have roads off of there, which are Sutton Lane, Paradise Lane, Pole Cat Lane. And I've checked with the, in the records, and it's 68 homes. I've spoken before to the planning department. I've written letters, and I and several other people went around, and we got some petitions. And every house that we visited, they were not in agreeance with it. And some of those people had not heard of it. And I think myself, there was only about a few other people on our road that actually got a letter, because there are not that many residents that actually touch that property. But all the people on the north side of the railroad tracks still have to drive that road, and it still will affect them. I'm not here tonight to argue about whether the barns are pretty or the golf course is good or not good. It is. I mean, you can look at them. They're beautiful. That's not the issue. The issue here is the traffic and doing what's right for the people that live on that road. The golf course was built around in the early 2000s. I'd lived in Panola for 20 years at that time, and we were never approached by Mr. Oliphant about the plans of that. And after it was built, I attended various meetings there. I supported him. I went there for meals at the restaurant until it actually stopped serving meals about 10 years ago. I can honestly say that in those 42 years, I'd never met him before. He may have been in that restaurant, but I didn't know who it was. When he introduced himself in the October meeting, that was the first time I had laid eyes on him. And I feel like that, you know, maybe if he talked to us, maybe we would feel a little different about it, but still, it's the safety. Maybe if he built it and had the entrance out on 301 or something, but it's just not feasible on the Panola Road. And I know that it's two agricultural barns that have been built there, and I think they're, I mean, I can only see one. I think it's beautiful. But there are the, there are two vehicles meeting on our road on a 17-foot wide road. It's just not, it's not a good thing. And the tar is coming off the edges of the road. There's no shoulders. There's deep ditches. It's just a real challenge. We've learned to deal with it. We slow down. We sometimes stop for each vehicle that we meet. Well, others that come there and not go do that. So is that going to cause a problem? VDOT has already said that most of the drivers, according to their survey, was 15 miles over the speed limit.
Mrs. Gordon, can you sum it up, because you're past your three minutes?
Yes. I just want to invite you all to come down to Panola Road. It may not be an accurate time right now while the schools are closed, but you would see, just come any time of day and just drive the road, try it every day of the week for about a week, and I think you'd understand.
Thank you.
And I'd like for you to vote now.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, my name is Richard Carson. Excuse me. Live on Panola Road, Mattapanai District. I am in total support of Mr. Oliphant and this event venue. I would like to give a little background. This property has a little more meaning to me than anyone else. I was very close friends with Dickie and Rachel Anderson, the previous property owners. In 2013, Mr. Anderson became bedridden. I started then going up helping Ms. Anderson daily with him and any other chores that needed to be done on the property. He passed away later that year. In 2014, I retired. I was able to assist Rachel with more of the chores, keeping the property up. She had two great passions. One was her flower garden. She worked endless hours in there. Beautiful garden, would rival anything in the state. The second was the wildlife. Daily, every afternoon, she would get on her ATV, ride around the field sprinkling out corn so she could watch the deer and the turkeys come out with their young a lot of times. She would fix pans of food, set them at the edge of her yard for other wildlife, like she had a family of fox, family of coons. So she loved the wildlife. With her health deteriorating, I began going two, three, four times a day to help her. At that time, we had a lot of time to talk. She was so adamantly against selling any portion of this property. Her biggest fear was for it to be subdivided. After she passed, and I found her that Mr. Oliphant purchased it, that was my fear, is it going to be subdivided. When I heard of his plan, I was very excited. Mr. Oliphant has worked very hard to keep the property in the rural venue. Anyone traveling down the road, only thing you're going to see is a beautiful horse barn and a beautiful field. I feel like this would have minimal impact on the people in Panola. Most traffic will be coming from 301, where they would go travel three quarters of a mile to the venue, turn around and go back three quarters of a mile out. Only property that would pass was the gentleman by, one house. And in the time that I was helping Rachel, I never would accept one penny. That was a labor of love. But I'm going to make it quick. But I'd come before y'all asking to be paid. Pay me by granting Rachel her last wish for the property to stay whole, for her flowers to be able to continue to grow in the new venue, and for the wildlife to be able to roam the property.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. I got to cut you, because you're really past the limit.
I understand. I'm asking for y'all's support and grant him the permits.
Is the applicant here, and would he like to make a statement? Mr. Oliphant, would you like to say anything? Okay. Yeah?
I'd like for you to ask for that. Tony Lippa, I live in the Bowling Green District, but I'm coming to Sheriff Lippa and also have First Sergeant Bakken with me. I know you guys got a packet full dealing with the traffic, and that's what I'm going to talk about, is the traffic. From 2015 to 2020 here, we've only had a total of 13 crashes throughout that entire period. Other than the one gentleman that lives from the 301 side to the barn venue, as far as I even broke down the crashes, where 11 of them occurred north of the railroad tracks. That's where those in opposition live. We only had two of them south of that. So when I look at the totals, the total number of crashes for all those years, we also had 11 of them were local people. One of them lived in Fredericksburg, who was driving a VDOT truck that happened to slip off the road and hit a tree, and the state worked that. So I have the crashes worked by the state police and also by your sheriff's office. And in 2019 and 2020, the state police has yet to work a crash there, but yet your sheriff's office did. One of them was north of it, which was property damage. Another one, it was in 2019, and in 2019, we also had one with property damage. So there's only two since then. And I know, Mr. Thomas, you had mentioned something about a VDOT study. Well, when I heard all the complaints and stuff and dealing with the traffic, we also set up our speed trailer there. So I have results for all that, too, and that was done in 2019. So the October of 2019, I have those. Also looked at the bus traffic, and JD sent me a letter. I don't know if it's in your packet or not, and I didn't want to overwhelm you with all these things, because they were talking about the buses and now the log trucks. It's a country road. It's a 40-mile speed limit through there. And I've been here, so when that speed limit used to be 55, it went from 55 to 45, down to 40. And the speed trailer is done right there at the barn venue. So in case you had something like that, and I believe First Sergeant Bakken had something from the state police side of it, and if you have questions for me, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Bakken. I am from the Bowling Green District, but I'm here tonight as the first sergeant here for the area. I'm here as a neutral party, and I'm also a numbers guy, as I know Mr. Thomas is. We started looking at the numbers when Sheriff Lippa reached out to me. He wanted to kind of know statistically, what type of traffic are we currently dealing with? And the numbers I'm going to provide you are annually. They're composed from January, I'm sorry, July of last year to July of this year. So I understand we're all dealing with numbers as far as COVID is concerned. But if you look at Interstate 95, you're looking at about 103,000 cars a day. That's in a 24-hour period. And then you break that down to 207. You're looking at 10,000 cars a day. And then we move to the opposite end of Panola Road. You're looking at 3,400 cars a day. Sparta Road is almost 3,000. And so daily average on Panola Road is 420 vehicles. So that is from July of last year to July of this year, and that was just updated by VDOT. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have either your report or the sheriff's report in our packet? I didn't see anything like that.
There's a letter that stated that there was not a traffic.
Can you get your data to Mr. Fincham or Mr. Parton, so we can distribute it? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, First Sergeant.
Did you just want the numbers, Mr. Thomas? Because, like I said, I do have the VDOT reports there with everyone's name and this whole thing?
May I have that whole thing, if possible? I don't want it right now, but if you can get a copy.
Some of the state police stuff. Yeah, the actual FR300s, which are the DMV reports that both agencies have to submit. We can't simply turn over because of...
Oh, well, yeah.
We can statistically put them together, but with the actual reports.
All right. If you've got just statistics that you'd like to put together, that'd be fine.
I do. I have stuff like what was property damage, whether it was south of the tracks, north of the tracks. I'll give you all that. And I did mention that out of the 13 crashes, 12 of them were single-vehicle.
Right.
There's only been one that involved two, and that was just recently in November.
Yeah, if you can get that to Mr. Fincham, I'd appreciate it. Give the applicant a chance to talk.
I was, Mr. Oliphant, would you like to?
Please.
So much has been said. I'm not so sure where to start, but let me first say, I haven't been before the board in 20 years. The last time I was here was in connection with the golf course, and I think there's only a handful of us that have been here before. Floyd, of course, has been here. I was here. Mike Fincham was here, and Gary Wilson was here. So I thought I'd just give just a little bit of background on myself. When I finished college with an engineering degree, I went into the Navy, served on an aircraft carrier at the end of the Vietnam War. I was not in the Pacific. I was in the Atlantic Fleet, after which I went to work at the Patent Office as an examiner, went to law school at night at Georgetown University, joined a firm, became a partner there, started my own firm in 1983, and went from a very small, unknown, four-man intellectual property law firm, which has patents, trademarks, and copyrights. And we grew that firm. We grew that firm from four attorneys to the point today where we have 50 attorneys, three offices. Our main office is in Alexandria, where the Patent Office is located. In 98, we opened an office in St. Louis, Missouri, and in 2011, we opened an office in Charlotte, North Carolina. I keep saying "we." I resigned as a partner. The firm is Oliphant PLC. I resigned as a partner at the end of June. I'm now senior counsel with that firm, which means they don't need me unless there's a problem that they think I can help them with. So that's a little bit of background. We did the golf course. We did the golf course, did a soft opening in 2004, grand opening in June of 2005. We wanted to build an absolutely first-class facility. We were hoping to be Golf Digest, within the Golf Digest... We were hoping to be Golf Digest, within the Golf Digest top five. God bless America. We were Golf Digest number two best new upscale course in the United States in 2005. Were continuously ranked amongst the best public courses in the United, in the United States. So that sort of background as, as to how we got here. We're not new to event venues. The golf course is an event venue. We've done everything that any venue would do. Of course, weddings, meetings, anniversary parties, high school reunions. Every stripe has been done at the golf course. So what we plan to do with the barn venue are basically the same things, obviously in a very different setting. The world is dramatically changing in the way people like to get married, and I can use my own family as an example of how we got where we are today. A lot of younger people don't like the formality of a golf club and sort of a maybe little bit of stuffiness about it, and they like a lot more casual environment. And, and as I think most of you know, barn, barn venues, at least for the moment, are in. In our case, when I had the opportunity to buy the Anderson property, and I should say by way of background, the Andersons were very strong supporters of the golf course when I opened it, and they were very candid with me. They're a very interesting couple, if any of you got to know them. They're two very different people. Dicky was as down-to-earth a person as you could find. His wife, while she was a good old farm girl, was women's athletic director at Randolph-Macon College. Very, very interesting, interesting people, strong supporters of the golf course. We became friends, so much so that I think one Christmas breakfast, Dicky was our Santa Claus that year and did just a fantastic job with it. But they were really candid. When I, when I first met with them, they were really candid, and they said, "We're gonna support you, but it's not because we want a golf course, it's because we don't want a trailer park or 10-acre, 10-acre subdivisions." But we went on and became very good friends, and it's a real pleasure and honor, frankly, that we've been able to purchase the Anderson property. We tried to save the house. They had a beautiful home there. I, I spent $50,000 trying to figure out how to save that house. And finally, the contractors, we brought in some very special people who specialize in preserving homes. The foundation, it's, it's, it's frankly surprising in some people's view that the house didn't collapse. On the home we planned to build, we've just finished the drawings. The front end of that house is going to be dimensionally identical to the front of the Anderson home. You'll have a central hallway of the exact same size, two rooms on each side with the exact same size. One side of that, the library side of those rooms, is going to be named the Richard and Rachel Anderson Library. We were able to get from the house many different mementos relating to the family, the Carsons who had, Mr. Carson spoke. He has some mementos which he's gonna share that we can place, place in that room as well. But back to, back to our experience with venues and traffic at the golf course, I think, I think you'll see in your packet, we've worked with the planning department to limit the number of events to 70. We've also decreased the number of people that can come to the events. And so of those 70 events, 50, 50 can have up to 150 people. The remaining 20 can have up to 200, 200 people. Now remember, we're never gonna cap those numbers with number of events. You know, meetings, meetings, you talk in terms of 20 to 30 people. Weddings today, I'll use my, my son's wedding as an example, we had less than 100 people there. Having said that, a lot of those people came from around the country. We had people from California, Texas, Nebraska, Maryland, Northern Virginia, Virginia Beach, et cetera. And that raises the hotel question that came up, which is a really fair comment. We need, we need, I wouldn't even say hotels, we need quality lodging. And certainly, we think this venue, I think, will present an opportunity. I don't know how often the county gets approached by people who want to bring in high-end lodging, but we get the same problem at the golf course. We get a lot of interstate golfers coming off 95, and they'll say to us literally, "We would love to stay additional days and play," but because there's no quality lodging close by, we're, tonight, we're, we're heading to Virginia Beach to play because we can get, we can get quality lodging at Virginia Beach. Back to the kind of events we had and the kind of numbers we've talked about, we've had weddings, many weddings at the golf course with in excess of 150 people. I think on two occasions, in excess of 200 people with no problems. No traffic, no traffic going in, no traffic going out. On golf days, we have some golf days take an outing. If we have a full outing, that's 144 people. That's 144 people playing. That's not counting the people if it's being sponsored or entertained by some group. They've got staff people, we've got our staff people there. They come in and out with traffic and without a traffic problem. Probably the most extreme example I could think of is the Virginia Agribusiness Council had an outing, and this is probably the largest one we ever had, where they had 100, we can only, we only have 72 golf carts, which means we can only have 144 golf, golf players. They took off 144 in the morning who played, and they had another 144 in the afternoon as played. That's probably the most we've ever had in a day. They all went in and out without any traffic. Over the 15 years that the golf course has been open, we have had hundreds of thousands of vehicles going in and out of the golf course on a regular basis, and to date, there has been no reported accident on Panola Road involving a vehicle going to or from the golf course. That's an amazing statistic. And when you read the letters that were submitted by the sheriff and the first sergeant, in summary, they say Panola Road is safe, and the facts, the facts which I just presented don't lie. Now let's talk about the benefit to the county. Someone said, "You're gonna make $800." That person's not very good at math. Let's take the golf course, for example. I purchased, I purchased that property for just over $300,000. I wish my real tax bill indicated that the property was worth $300,000. The property's now worth multi-millions of dollars, and the real taxes that I pay, I'm not complaining. I am not complaining about the taxes, but they're a hell of a lot more than $853. That alone, plus grocery receipts tax. Plus, we have golfers, it, it continues to astonish me how far golfers will come. We get a lot of play out of Southern Maryland, Prince George's County, Northern Virginia, to the south, Richmond. It's an enormous drive for those people. One of the complaints about golf, two complaints about golf, takes too long and it costs too much money. We get people from very far distances coming. When they get to the county, they're doing lots of other things, stopping and getting gas, other needs, food, drinks, other things beyond that. The county gets many, many other, many, many other benefits. In addition, both with respect to the golf course and the event barn. We're gonna, we have many employees at the golf course. We've already hired two people full-time, full-time for the event venue. One of them, I'm very proud to say, is my son, if he's, he's sitting back there. My son, Adam, I'll give you a little bit of his background. He went to Virginia Tech. He attended Virginia Tech. 9/11 happened, and 9/11, my, my brother-in-law was a career Army person. He just recently, recently died. 9/11, for reasons I can't fully explain, significantly impacted not only my son, but one of my nephews, who was really like a brother to my son. And they decided they were gonna enroll, they were both at that time, bachelor, young bachelors, strong energy, they went in the Army. Adam served for eight years in the Army, served in both Iraq and Afghanistan. At the end of the eight years in the Army, he and a bunch of his buddies went out to San Jose, California, for reasons I'm still not, still not sure. Finished school at San Jose State, State University. Adam worked for Facebook for a number of years. That's where he met his now-wife, fiancee, Melanie. The first time she came back with him, we first met her on a ski trip out west, but the first time she came back here, she, she fell in love with Caroline County, put some additional pressure beyond ours on him to come back. He's come back, he's been back for a year. He's working full-time as the project manager. We've hired a second gentleman who's a nurseryman landscaper. We're trying to save as many of the, I think Mr. Carson mentioned, the gardens that Ms. Anderson has. They were spectacular. Unfortunately, due to her deteriorating health, they, they couldn't have been maintained, and they were enormous. We're trying to save some of those plants. The nurseryman that I talked about, we've already created a, a nursery, trying to save and utilize in the future as many of those plants as possible. Something I should have mentioned at the very, very beginning, but I didn't, I'm, my wife and I are very long-term residents of Caroline County. We bought an old abandoned farm in 1980 and have lived there continuously ever since, and that's on Charlesburg Road in the, in the Western District. I'd like to, something I, again, I should have said much earlier. I had two additional submissions I would like to make. First is a, a number of additional people who have signed petitions in support, and contrary to what one of the prior witnesses said, eight of these people, eight of these, I think there's 10 people on here, eight of them live on, on Panola Road. A ninth lives on Sutton Lane, which is right off Panola Road. In addition, the Carsons who have testified live on Panola Road. You also have an earlier submitted support declaration by Mr. and Mrs. Whitaker, who live, who live on Panola Road physically between the golf course entrance and the entrance to the venue, to the venue site. A second.
Mr. Olaf, can I get you to wrap it up so that we can?
Yep.
I have, I have six, one, two, three, five, six, seven additional letters that were promised to be read this evening.
Well, well, I'm, I'm gonna ask Mr. Olaf what his last submission is, and then I'm gonna ask that we continue the public hearing, and then you can just read the names of the peoples that read letters or that wrote letters, and we could read those at the continued public hearing. Because I, I, I would like to do a few more things before we actually vote on your project. One, as Mr. Williams said, and, and you and I talked yesterday, is come out and see it again.
Yep.
And the, the, the other thing is, not that I'm a real miracle worker, but, you know, I think I said before, I'm trying to look for the win-win, and when families are on opposite sides of the issue, it's probably kind of hard for me to find a win-win. But I'd like to have at least that opportunity, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay?
My, my second submission is, someone, someone said that we obviously aren't experienced in doing weddings very well, and this is a review put on, in September of 2019, put on TripAdvisor, and I'll give you the background. It's a woman that works for the county. I don't, I don't know her name. It's a woman that works, my staff does. It's a woman that works for the county. I think it was in September 2019. A name you keep hearing is Brenda, and I should have mentioned that earlier. This is Brenda Simmons, who's the general manager of the golf course. And you'll see the name Brenda mentioned in this review. They had a, they had a wedding scheduled in Westmoreland County, I think on the river, perhaps in a state park, for a Saturday in September. Hurricane Dorian hit. On the Thursday, two days before the wedding, whoever the venue was called and said, "We're not open on, we're not gonna be open on Saturday." So this poor mother, and you can imagine what the bride and groom were thinking about, starts looking around, "What can we do?" Most, I can't speak for her fully, but nobody wanted to talk to her. She called the golf course, spoke with Brenda. Now it's Thursday, midday. We, if I was around, I'm not so sure we'd agree to it. Brenda, Brenda took it on, cleaned it up, and on Saturday, and I'll let, I'll let the mother, you can read this and get the mother's description of what happened and how it happened. But the wedding went off beautifully, and at the end of the day, the groom said, "This is a hell of a lot better than the venue we had selected." And of course, they thanked us enormously to get out of the position they were in. So I, I think we know how to handle a first-class wedding in, in first-class style. The other thing I want to mention in some of the correspondence, I think Mr. Elliott testified, I'm, I'm a pretty quiet person. It's, it's, it's mine, it's, it's just my nature. But in some of the correspondence, people suggested that I had done, I didn't do anything for the local community. And so I would ask you to read my letter of June 22, and I've attached, and I don't like attaching to it, but I've tried to list just some of the things I've done for the local community. So thank you. Thank you so much for your time, and who should I give?
Thank you so much, Mr. Olaf. If you could give it to.
With Mr. Parton right there, and he will take care of that for you. The letters that will be read at the continued hearing is from Mark Cutherson. Culbertson.
We got nine today.
Kitty Gordon.
Yeah.
Albert Lilly. William Ashley Carneal.
Oh, Alan, you didn't have to pass that out now.
Luke Gordon.
That's Jack Lilly, the lawyer.
Robert and Cindy Johnson. And Sissy Coleman. And these will all get read if they're not here at the, at the continuation of the hearing will get read then.
Mr. Chairman.
Just. Mr. Mr. Black.
I'm, I'm a little baffled by the continuation of the public hearing, only because I think the.
Thank you.
The original documents, Mr. Olaf, when you went to the planning commission was back in October, correct?
Yes.
So we're talking, and I know we've had COVID, but we're talking almost a year. And, I mean, the planning commission, and then COVID hit, and the planning commission has put him off.
Well, Mr. Olaf put himself off until February. He made that decision himself, and, and we're really not affecting anything more. We're just gonna put it off until next month. He's, he's waited all, all that time, and there are some other things I'd like to look at, and I'd appreciate your, you know, help in doing that.
And Mr. Black, I appreciate you watching out for the citizens, but I haven't seen this property yet. I couldn't fit it in this weekend, and I don't expect staff to work on the weekend, so I'd like to see it before I vote on it, which is another reason for the continuation.
I can, I can support the comment in this respect, that the, at the October 2019, my, my new daughter-in-law was two months pregnant. I'm now the proud grandson of a four-month-old baby named Jack, named Jack, so time flies.
Mr. Mr. Olaf, are you okay with a delay of a month?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, obviously, I'd like, I'd like to have this behind me. The drain field, I should have mentioned, you know, there, there's a second barn. We, we have the first barn built. There's gonna be a second barn behind the house, which is. There's gonna be a second barn behind the house, which is really a preparation barn. It's gonna have separate rooms for the groom's party and the bride's party, so they can get, get prepared to come into the wedding in, in, in the other barn. Part of this deal is, it's got, because you're gonna have so many people coming through, let's say you have 100 people at the wedding, not unlike what you, in the hearing before, before me, we've, we've got it, we have designed, and the Health Department has approved, a very specialized drain field, and obviously, I wanna, I freely, frankly, wanna build that. We gotta have it in before we can have our first event, and I'd like to build that as soon as possible, as well as get construction on the second barn. We just finished plans on the house, we're gonna be talking to builders in the next week on the house. And like the question I think you asked, I can't remember the poor gentleman's name who was taking a beating up here before me, but yes, yes, I do have the financial resources to do all of the above.
Thank you, Mr. Olaf.
Thank, thank you all, very much.
I would do appreciate it. So I'm, I'm gonna make the motion that, that we continue the public hearing. I think our next meeting is actually the Tuesday after Labor Day, so could we do it the second meeting, which would be the 18th, that it would still be the same?
You don't wanna do it at the first meeting in September?
No, 'cause that's the Monday, the Tuesday right after Labor Day, and there may be some people that, that have some other thing.
I make one last comment on win-win.
Okay.
Certainly.
My, my, I'm an amateur developer, I'm a pa, I'm a patent attorney.
One, one short comment, Mr. Olaf.
Okay, win-win. What's beautiful to me about this project is I think it is a win-win. The county wins, the county wins because it gets more jobs, it gets more money it makes, and I should have said this earlier, at, at the end of the day, like the golf course, I hope, and my family hopes, it will make Caroline County an even better place to live, work, and play. And it's a win-win for that reason for the county, and it's a win-win for Panola Road because it preserves the beautiful scenic rural character of Panola Road. Thank, thank you.
That's, that's, that's my motion again.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the, of leaving the public hearing open until, continuing the public hearing until the second meeting in September?
Does that mean it'll be open at the next meeting?
For him to read the letters, basically, and-
So we're having, we have tonight, we have the first meeting in September.
No, no, it's continued until the second meeting in September. Because it was the, it was the Tuesday after, after Labor Day, and I don't know who was gonna be around. Some of them had said that was a bad day for them, so. Okay, so that was the motion.
To answer your question is, it, we wouldn't take public comment again until the second meeting in September.
Which is basically, and that was one of the things, on rezoning, sometimes there are issues that come before the public hearing is closed, and I just wanted to leave that, make sure that was at least open, so. Call a question, Mr. Staley?
All, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Olaf, for your patience. Agenda item number seven. Special exception RZ, or reason, now I am tired. Request for rezoning for RZ 03 2020 WHC Associates LLC, owner Lady Smith HHH LLC Incorporated, applicant, rezoning from rural preservation, density one dwelling per 10 acres to B1 business on tax map 52-3.1, consisting of 11.49 acres, more or less. Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next public hearing is a rezoning for WHC Associates owner and Lady Smith HHH LLC applicant. They're requesting a rezoning from RP to B1 on 10 acres of land, further identified as tax map 52-3-1. Property is located on Lady Smith Road, this would be the north side of Lady Smith Road, just west of the McDonald's, to give you a landmark. As the board is aware, there has been discussion about a certain convenience retail gas facility locating on 639. This is the rezoning that would allow that to occur. The planning commission held its public hearing on this request and forwarded this to the board with a recommendation of approval. You will note in the staff report that there were concerns raised by both staff and the commission concerning the design of the access to the site. You do have a revised GDP. The last two sheets, which address the rear access to the property that would be developed as the remaining parcels are developed, which I think addresses our concerns about the additional ingress and egress to the site and getting traffic back to the signalized intersection, which was, which was our concern. I would note that this is an unproffered rezoning in terms of use or the GDP, but I think the applicant understands our concerns about the traffic flow, and there is a board commitment to assistance for the intersection improvement. So I think we're all on the same page.
Any, any questions from anybody in the board before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Fincham? Oh, sorry.
Yes, sir.
The, the drawings, the stamped drawings from Fairbanks and Franklin are a little bit different than the Silver Sketch. Which ones do I look at, as far as ingress and egress?
The Silver Sketch addresses their property only.
Okay.
The, the drawings from the engineer address the, the remainder or the additional access in the future, as the property is developed.
Okay. But the, the access for off Lady Smith Road is-
Based upon the, the convenience store location.
My understanding, Mr. Fincham, is the right-in and right-out would be, the right-out would be moved or wouldn't happen?
The right-in, right-out actually got moved closer to the proposed New Green Road traffic signal. Previous versions had the right-in, right-out further east towards the McDonald's. The relocation raised concerns with VDOT about traffic exiting the, the convenience store, trying to cross the two lanes of traffic to make a left turn at, at the new signalized intersection, or to make a U-turn at the new signalized intersection. The modification that, that was agreed to by VDOT calls for the construction of, of a concrete median between the left-turn lanes and the through lanes, so that that traffic exiting on to Route 639 could, could not shoot across the, the two through lanes to get, to make a left-turn lane. They would actually have to go further west to make a U-turn at the next intersection. Or come back out to the, to, to the signal from the rear of the property.
So what they're really trying to do is force them to come out at the light? To make, to make the left, to come out and make the le, instead of making the right-out and crossing all the traffic and then trying to make the U-turn at the light?
Right, either come out, uh, come out at, at New Green Road to make a left of the light, or they would have to, to go through, continue west on 639 to make, to make the turn. They're, they're trying to reduce the left, the, the potential left-turn traffic at the signalized intersection. So I think we've done that with that design.
You're trying to reduce the left-turn traffic or, oh, the U-turn?
U-turn.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Mr. Black.
I just got one quick question, the, on, behind the, the proposed gas station, will there be a connection to McDonald's right now on, on the backside?
There's a plan for a connection to McDonald's. McDonald's never actually recorded an ingress-egress easement, which VDOT has contacted them, and that was actually a condition of their management plan that was approved by VDOT, was, was the, the ingress-egress easement. It's actually to, to their benefit to agree to that, so I don't think there'll be an issue there.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, they don't have access from eastbound traffic on 639.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing for RZ 03 2020 WHC Associates LLC, owner H, Lady Smith HHH Incorporated.
I'll be, I'll be brief. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board members, Mike has pretty much laid it all out. I'll just say three things. This rezoning application conforms with the 2030 comprehensive plan. It conforms more specifically with your Lady Smith community plan, and the proposed first use by Sheets will, will, will offer the possibility of additional uses coming to that area as well. The owner is here, the Sheets representatives are here, and the engineer for the project is also here to answer any specific questions that you have after Mike and, or questions of me as well. I'd be glad to answer questions that you have, or have the engineer or the owners or the Sheets representatives answer questions for you. Yeah, I'm sorry. My name is Jervis Hairston, and I'm representing the applicant, Lady Smith, and developer, Lady Smith HHH LLC.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Or make a motion?
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Because I'm gonna close the public hearing. Closing public hearing, RZ 03 2020. Questions, comments from the board?
Motion would be in order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RZ 03 2020 for WH Scene Associates.
I have a motion to second any further discussion.
Call a question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Welcome to Caroline.
Thank you, gentlemen, looking forward to it.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible to have one public hearing and two votes for these text amendments that come next?
Yes, Mr. Fincham is indicating that is possible.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next public hearing, TXT 01 and 02 2019 are proposed amendments to the sign ordinance related to certain large industrial projects under single ownership. The proposed amendments would amend the M1 and Planned Industrial Park District regulations specifically to allow additional sign, an increase in the number of signs in the total sign area, to allow additional advertising of the industrial parks based upon the size of the facility. You have the supporting documentation, a particular large industrial owner has requested this modification. However, as, as we normally do, we don't prepare a text amendment for a specific user, rather we look at it to, to the regulations as a whole and to potentially similarly situated
Any questions from the board? I'm going to open up public hearing for text amendment 01 2020 and text amendment 02 2020. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move for the adoption of text amendment 01 2020.
I have a motion second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? None.
Move for the adoption of text 02 2020.
I have a motion to second any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. And I'll take agenda item number nine.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for a point of order, please?
Mr. Thomas?
I believe Mr. Underwood's motion at our last board meeting, and I know my second, I said just public hearing.
I've talked to Mr. Emerson about this, and he has said that that is not the case, and that we can, Mr. Thomas, it's already late, let's just move this on.
Well, all right.
We can have a vote.
If you wish to do that, I, I would like to have a point, another point of order.
Mr. Thomas?
The point of order is that the monument itself does not belong to Caroline County. The monument, according to Confederate Veteran Magazine, if you'd like to see the actual ownership, it was given to the county or placed by the United Daughters of the Confederacy.
It is dedicated to the citi, Mr. Emerson, can you give us some guidance on this?
It's, it's-
But my motion was-
No, we've, we've already reviewed the motion.
Pass that down to him, Jeff, please, 'cause there's one for each of us.
We've reviewed the motion.
This, just let me finish this one thing. This particular book or magazine called the Confederate Veteran, which was created in 1800 and something, their 1906 entry, which I'm passing you, says that the local chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy of Bowling Green in 1906 erected a beautiful monument at the cost of $1,700. It is a tall shaft surrounded by a figure of a private soldier at parade rest. Nowhere in there does that say it belongs to Caroline County, and actually, the inscription on it is wrong, 'cause it says "put there by the citizens of Caroline."
The General Assembly has assigned us the task of making a decision whether it stays or goes, so based on that-
But the point is, we should be talking to the United Daughters of the Confederacy and tell them to get their monument and ask them where, where would they like us to move it?
The General Assembly, in this latest law, has tasked the Board of Supervisors or the local governing body with making a decision. In that law that they've passed, they've given us the option of going to referendum. We went to referendum for the high school, for, for, for bond referendum for $25 million 'cause we didn't feel we could make that decision.
That's the only thing, that's the only thing we've ever gone to a referendum for. We have never gone to a referendum for the budget, which is much more crucial. We haven't gone to the referendum for how much money the schools get, how many sheriff cars we get. This, those are more important decisions for the county. This is an important decision for everybody right now.
Exactly, it's an important decision for everybody and everybody in the county, since it's dedicated to the citizens of Caroline County, should have a voice.
But that's not what the reality, I've given you the book that says the United Daughters of the Confederacy made it, not the citizens of Caroline.
The General Assembly has tasked us and given us the option of going to referendum, so based on the General Assembly-
This is, it's, it's not just a fake thing. This is actually from the Confederate Veteran Magazine, volume 18, that says the local- that says the local chapter, United Daughters of Confederacy, gave this monument or placed this monument.
Mr. Emerson, am I correct in what we've been tasked with by the General Assembly?
It, it's, it's, they're saying where they placed monuments. That's what it says that it is.
Mr. Thomas, give Mr. Emerson a chance to at least.
I wasn't saying a word.
I'm not sure exactly what your question is, but, but the law, the statute that was passed by the General Assembly deals with Confederate monuments on county or government property and gives you the, you as the locality, the right to remove them or cover them or do a lot of things with them. Doesn't really deal with the ownership of the monument. It deals with whether it can stay on county property or not, and one of the options is to have a referendum. But even if you have a referendum, you, you, regardless of what the results of that are, that, that's advisory, and then you would have to have a public hearing about it, and, and that's advisory, and then you decide what to do with it, but I don't think the actual ownership of the monument.
Is, is something that is covered in the statute. So that's, that's all. Thanks. But, but Mr. Emerson, if we have a referendum, we have to put the public hearing date in the referendum application, which means we'd have to have a second public hearing. Yeah, it's not, yes, it's not, you don't put it in the ref, you don't put the date in the referendum, but you would have to have, you would have to notice the public hearing after the petition for the referendum is filed, which would mean if we filed the petition, say, tomorrow or the next day, we would have to, we would have to hold a, a public, we'd have to, we would have to notice a public hearing after that. So the public hearing that is currently set for the 25th would not satisfy that requirement.
We would do two.
You would have to have another one. That's it.
But a referendum is what I have been profoundly asked for by many, many folks. And it gives them an opportunity to, who can't come to public hearing because of COVID, enough from the audience, there's no speaking at this time. It gives, it gives plenty of people an opportunity to voice their opinion in a referendum. It's non-binding, but it gives us all an indication of what people's feelings are.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. I, I've thought a lot about this, and I've actually lost sleep over it. If the referendum was a binding referendum, I would be 100% behind it. But since it's non-binding, it, it brings up some concerns. The, two weeks ago, or whenever we last met, a month ago, we unanimously, six nothing, voted to go to a public hearing on August 25th.
Right.
If we now go to referendum, the August 25th public hearing, we can still hold, but it's moot. Why would anyone show up to speak? So after, after we decided on August 20, or whenever it was that we decided we were going to go out to a public hearing, I knew this would be a controversial issue. We're not going to make friends one, one way or another. I mean, there's just no way on this that you're, you're gonna, you're gonna make one side or the other upset. I went to the YMCA, I went to Wright's Chapel, I went to County Line Baptist, I went to the Catholic Church, I went to Moore Store, I went to the Archery Range, I went to the winery, and I put up signs for public hearing. And I also put, email me with your opinion. So far, I think I've had 21 correspondents, about half from my district. To me, the referendum has some issues in itself. For example, let's say we go to referendum, and it's non-binding, and what happens if four districts vote to take it down, but you have two districts that are overwhelming and say, we're going to keep it up? Now, someone like, so if the total vote is to keep it up, but then Mr., I'm just using Mr. Forehand's district, my district, Mr. Underwood's district vote to take it down, does the supervisor then, are you bound to the, is that supervisor bound to the total vote? Or is that supervisor bound to their district? So to me, the referendum is not necessarily solving an issue because, in my opinion, and I know we've talked about, we represent the whole county, in my opinion, if my, if my constituents vote one way or another, like, I have to go with my constituency in Western Carolina. But the total vote in the county might disagree with my constituency in Western Carolina. So in that case, the referendum doesn't solve anything. And, and so the other thing too is, what is the cost of the referendum process? The, I mean, this isn't, we, we talk about cost. You know, it's not, so we could spend all this money on the referendum, then have to have a public hearing because we can't cancel the public hearing on the 25th. Then we're going to have to have a public hearing, then we'll have to have the referendum, then we'll have to have a public hearing after the election day to, to decide what we're going to do with it, and if it's decided to take down, then we have to spend money on taking it down. So I'm not sure the referendum, if we're talking about cost savings, I'm not sure the referendum actually does that.
Well, we're already going to, we're already going to an election, so there's no cost there. No, they haven't printed ballots, ballots are not printed yet. Right.
Mr. Chairman, with, with all due respect, the reality of it is, and I made the motion, my original motion was to take it down, then we had to do the 30-day notice. That motion has not been voted on because we said we would had to have a public hearing first. You, you just can't introduce a, a referendum and say, this is, let me finish.
I haven't said anything.
You introduced this as a way of giving people another voice. It's up to this group, the six of us right here, to make a decision and lead, as so many people have said tonight. Now, if you don't want to lead, that's one thing, or you're afraid of, that people are not going to like your vote? That's something you have to deal with. But the reality of it is, this issue needs to be voted on and done with.
It's not hard to do the right thing. That's all, all it comes down to. It's not hard to do the right thing.
I think we're afraid of listening to the folks that are going to vote.
Nobody's afraid. Nobody's afraid.
A referendum is just something.
I'm standing here with courage right now to vote right now. I can vote right now. I can tell you that my great-great-grandfather served in the Civil War. He served for the United States Color Troops. I can tell you that another set of great-great-grandparents were slaves during the Civil War, right here in Caroline. Right here. I can tell you that now, I, I just got a news flash of another county unanimously voting to take their statue down. We have to be on the right side of history. We have to show people that we can lead. We have to show people we can do the right thing.
Mr.? Miss, go ahead, Mrs. Long.
I just wanted to state that we did mention referendum at our last meeting. At that time, we didn't think it was possible to do before the time, and that, and we went with the public hearing. When we found out it was, when I heard that it was a possibility, I'm going to tell you why I was considering it. I have had so many mixed inputs from people as to leave it, move it. You know, they, they don't know. I've had people say, I don't care what you do, but don't spend my tax money on this. It's been there 100 years. And they, and I will tell you very straightforward, a lot of the mixed group is coming from the, from the black community. There are some who say they have had that statue there for 100 years. It does not bother me. So we are not going to make this a black and white issue. It is for me, I'm confused right now because I've got three different piles of do this, do this, do this, and I'm trying to get a feel for what my constituents want. I'm good with either way. The, the, the burden falls on us to vote, that's fine. My feeling was, I need to get it out there to everybody. The COVID is here. A lot of people don't want to come out. A lot of people due to the ballots going on in other areas, which, God bless us, you know, we have better communications than that. They don't, they're, they're nervous to come out and state their, their feelings, or they don't have internet, whatever. My feeling was on a referendum, everybody can mail in a vote, everybody can vote in an event, every, or they, they go to a poll, and it gives everybody a chance to voice their opinion. It was worth looking at what this board decides, we decide. We're not trying to kick it down the road, but we want to give everybody an opportunity to put in their ideas and, and their opinions. So it's worth looking at and discussing, and whatever we do from here, we do as a board together.
Mr. Forehand?
And I, I've mentioned the, the referendum at the last meeting as well. I think it's, it's a good data point. I'm a data guy. Like you, I, I haven't gotten as many correspondence as Mr. Black, but they've been all over the map. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to making the decision. I can make the decision right now, but I would like to know, do we, do we move it from the courthouse? Because I've heard, well, we need to, we need to take it, take it away, just make it gone. Then I've heard the, heard the, well, we give to the federal government. I'm like, well, you can read the headlines now, Trump erecting Confederate monuments on federal property. Well, that's not going to happen. And well, I understood, but I, I'm reluctant to, to say yes right now unless I know what's going to happen to it, or where is it going to go? Or how much it's going to cost. And that, that's a data point that I was actually astounded when I heard a proposed, I'm like, no, that can't be right. That's ridiculous. It's six figures. Maybe so, but that's something that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of variables. It's non-binding. I don't think that people having a say-so is a bad thing. There's leadership and there's dictatorship, okay? There's a fine line between those sometimes.
Do you think, does your congressman call you every time he votes? Hell, no.
He asks for input on, on controversial issues.
He votes what he thinks is right.
Agreed.
You think they call every citizen and say, oh, we're going to have a referendum because we want to raise your taxes? Or when Trump signs an executive order, do you think he calls you and say, hey, I'm going to sign this executive order?
No, but it's going to be a well-attended election where we're going to get the best.
It's a matter of leadership. Will I like it or not?
Let's, let's just vote on, on whether we have a referendum or not, and, and I think that's, we'll settle that.
Well, I'll make a motion just to get it off the table.
And I'll second it to get it off the table.
So we have a motion and a second to actually go to referendum, which gives everybody an opportunity to at least voice their opinion.
No narration is necessary, just.
All right.
Call the motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Can we have a discussion?
Mr. Thomas has called question.
No, I, I said no narration.
One of the things I think we're forgetting about a public hearing is the fact that anyone gets to voice their opinion. It's a, it's a public hearing, so a public hearing means even if they're afraid to come here, they can write us a letter. That's why I went out to solicit the different things. A public hearing means anyone can come, anyone can write us an email, anyone can write us a letter. Now, I would prefer them to be from Caroline, and then I prefer them to be even more so from my district, so I got a pulse on my district. But a public hearing means any citizen can have an input. Citizens don't just have input by putting a vote down in November. And that's why we have public hearings tonight on the, on the different things we had, is citizens could come and, and have that. Public input isn't just voting.
Agreed. That's what referendums are. Their opinions taken to the people, and that's how they're taken by the General Assembly, and that's how they're taken by local governments.
Can we call the question now, Mr. Chairman?
All in favor, well, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Nay.
Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
Mr. Thomas?
Nay.
Mrs. Long? And I'll vote aye.
Off the table.
The resolution fails.
Fails.
So there's no referendum?
No referendum.
Mr. Emerson, anything else we need to do?
No, sir. That's the vote.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10. Now, see, I don't, I think we should go into negotiation rather than go with a number. I wouldn't, but I wouldn't. Okay. I, I think we just need to, we need to, there needs to be a sit-down meeting with them and start talking real numbers instead of trying to give them a number, because you're, you're going to end up with very little.
They were supposed to, my discussion with Comcast last week, they were supposed to, to come back tomorrow and tell me what they thought the engineers had, and then, then I could possibly tell them what the county could do. I think he has an idea of what we think the county could do, so that's why we were discussing.
Well, that's, we, see, that's.
That's what we don't know.
You may want to turn it, but that's the, we know what the Vattie Grant per mile situation is for all of that.
Right.
So we, we do have a real good idea, and this density is much higher. So the cost per house should be, should be considerably lower.
Well, it should be. The, 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 the map number from Jericho Road and Route 1 to Jericho Road and Beaver Dam was 10 miles.
Right.
So we have a ballpark-ish number of what that would cost.
And we have the dwelling count, do we have a dwelling count yet? Have we?
That was something they had, I think. I don't, David, you didn't have that.
We got, we got sent that by, I have it from Tyler from the planning office about how many.
Because that will help you figure out the number for what the, I mean, what your realistic cost is.
But the realistic.
What I'll do, what I'll do is I will tell him, well, fir, first of all, is it, is it the general consensus of the board that we would contribute some funds to Comcast for them to extend their service from Jericho Road from Route 1 to Beaver Dam?
Certainly.
Certainly, but then, like, I, I. It has to, it has to go into other districts. I mean, it, it cannot.
But if, but if it goes to Beaver Dam, does that get to you?
But it has to go to, I need specific roads in Beaver Dam, because if you, when you add, I have, I have three constituents on Jericho Road. Out of the 125 constituents that are there, I have three of them. So, I mean.
I don't have any. So, I mean.
So, well.
I have any.
Yeah, but Atlantic Broadband is going to help you out immensely.
But that's, that's, that's another project. But, but my point is, if we can get them to, to start moving on Jericho Road, when they get closer to your other constituents, maybe we could say we've got extra more money, or some extra money.
I think.
And, and the real key for this is they've got to be there by 30 December.
Right, I think we have.
If we use COVID.
We can't, we can't.
I don't know what y'all are fussing about because they're not going to come to the table.
We, we can't piecemeal it right now because they only have to the 31st. We need to, you need to go, we need to go in there and say, look, these are the roads. These are the roads that we need to do, because if they piecemeal, they'll never get the project done by December 31st.
Well, see, that's the thing. We, we may only be able to do eight miles by December 30, 30th, the, you know, the cutoff date, then we may have to use a different pot of money to say, here's those extra five, six miles more that go into that. If we're, what? Yeah, I mean, if, if we use, if we use $10 of COVID money. Yeah, I mean, if we use, if we use $10 of COVID money, and that gets us five miles on Jericho Road, we should be able to find $10 somewhere else in the general fund to say, here, go another five or six miles. We should be able to do that. Our first negotiating point is, how much can you do by December 30th, and how much does it cost? They're going to say X. We're going to come back and say, well, okay, we can do that. Now, I got another pot of money if you can go further. Now, he's watching this, so he knows exactly what we're going to do now. But that was the plan anyhow.
To me, to me, piecemealing it, we've said before in the VATTI grant application, we were going to try to decide between the Port Royal project and the Matapanai project. We said, we decided that we would bundle them together, and we said, go big or go home. And I think that's what we need to do with some of these projects.
Well, we're trying to do the same thing.
But if we start piecemealing it, Mr. Thomas.
See, you've never been hungry before.
And the other problem is, is that.
If you had half a sandwich, you would know what that's like. I got half a sandwich, I'm not starving. Maybe I'll get another half a sandwich later. That's all I'm saying.
The key is maybe. We need to go to him with the areas that we want done in the western part of the county, and here are the roads that we want done.
If that's what the.
And Mr. Sadler.
If that's what the board does.
You're getting something at the Don Library.
Yeah, we still haven't, Mr. Sadler, we still haven't gotten the Don Library yet. And school starts next week, and I've been working on that one for four months.
I thought the co-op was going to step in with their tower guy.
We still don't have that. We might as well just take $30,000 and build our own tower, and then take it apart and move it.
REC is now putting pressure on the tower management company that manages that tower for them, and sending daily emails, and we should have an agreement with, what the holdup is, is the wind load study.
Wind load study on it, yeah.
And that's in the process. As soon as they get that, the documents are ready.
Do they think it needs to be reinforced, or is it going to pass?
I have no idea.
See, and I can't do a wind load study, is COVID stopping the wind load study? No.
No. It shouldn't.
Our tower is unique in Virginia.
Exactly, exactly. You can't get within six feet of our tower.
But I can say, in defense of REC, they are putting maximum pressure now for about the last seven days, because I also had expressed the same concern with schools starting, we needed to move forward.
If they don't do it by next week, we're going to build our own tower.
The other, but the other side of this, Mr. Underwood, to go down, they have got to get an expedited poll permit and a poll study done. So, in conjunction with this.
No. We've got a standard arrangement with VDOT that they can use the right of way.
Mr. Thomas, I would like, and Mr. Sadler, I hate to take up a lot of your time, or Mr. Farmer, but when we go there, I'd like, Mr. Sadler, what would be the best bang for our buck? If we give them a number, what would be the best bang for our buck after you leave Jericho Road? What would be the best bang for our buck in that area?
Fine.
And I want Mr. Sadler, I mean, I know Mr. Sadler, he's sent an email.
What, you don't trust me, man? You don't trust me?
Mr. Sadler has done an excellent job with the projects. I don't want it being political. I want it being factual.
It's not even my district. How's it going to be political? It's not my district. I'm doing you a service.
Oh, I appreciate it, Mr. Thomas. I appreciate it.
I'll be happy to go, Brian, you'll be fine. You'll be all right, Brian. See, what I needed was, we're saying we have a general consensus from the board that we will contribute to Comcast project. We just need a little more information from Comcast about the total length of the line and the total cost.
Cost per mile?
And going into Mr. Black's district.
And we have a drop dead date.
And we have a drop, they know we have a drop dead date.
So.
Are you going to ask a cost per mile?
They just need to give you a cost. Here's, are we going to use polls, or is this all going underground?
They can go underground. We may have, we may have to use polls to get all of that distance by December 30.
That's, I was going to say that, I'm just, in light of, you've got to get.
Then I got to redig the trench, though. I got to redig the trench after December 30. Let me just see what he says, and I will call you and make sure we know what we're doing.
All right.
Well, we have approved the intent to put in funds, but if he comes back with a ridiculous number, then we haven't. We haven't committed to a number.
Agenda item number 11, can't, the camera system for the sheriff's office. I understand theirs is, he's sitting here. No, these are car cameras, they've lost their server for sheriff? Car cameras?
Yes.
You've lost the server for the ones, part of the cameras that you've got, is what I understand?
Yeah, we lost them all, the servers, end of life, and we don't have anything right now. So it's got to be done.
You don't have any cameras at all?
No, the servers.
Both of them are gone, or just the one?
The whole, all of them.
Charlie said it was two different systems.
Come on, yes.
WatchGuard is a different system, so the old system is what died. So he does have a current server. The old system was actually running off a server that IT wanted him to take offline anyway, because it was end of life of Microsoft, which was becoming a security issue on our network. So it needed to go anyway. And so, they can explain that better than I can, especially this late hour. But what we want to do is then now buy cameras to put on a new server software that he does have, which I think is called WatchGuard.
Okay.
So that is up and running, but they don't have the equipment in the cars that works with that. They were in the process of converting that when the old system died.
Okay.
Or otherwise, it would have been a budget item to gotten all those converted.
I don't know that we have a choice at this point.
Is this part of your body cam program?
No, this is different. This is all car camera.
Okay, so, but you did say something about body cams before?
We have some body cameras, which is part of WatchGuard, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brian? Oh, okay.
The body cameras, they're WatchGuard, aren't they?
Yeah, it's 160,000.
Scott, they were, he said four body cams?
We have four body cameras right now.
And I think they're compatible.
They're what?
I think they are compatible to the WatchGuard system.
Okay.
Well, for the server, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, because, I thought we had talked something about body cams and car cams and all that before, so, okay.
We've been preparing for the crashing of the old system, for the 2008 software, and we've been migrating to the newer one that we've already got in place, but unfortunately.
Scott, can you talk into the mic, because I'm trying to hear, and.
I said, the sheriff had the first foresight to see that this system was actually getting outdated, so we started a new system. We got three cameras on a grant with the new system, so we've got a total of six cameras with the new system, with the WatchGuard system. We were trying to phase out the old system, but unfortunately, due to budget constraints, and as tight as y'all are on the budget, y'all didn't approve cameras over a couple of years, and that's understandable. You know, the money's not there, you can't approve it if it's not there. So we were going to migrate into the system. That's why it's getting hit pretty hard right now. We wouldn't have been hit this hard if we were able to just gradually replace the cameras when we replaced the cars, but we weren't able to do that due to budget constraints, so.
Is it at any way possible they could migrate to the AS400, so they could kill that too?
I was going to say, I can't believe you want them to migrate to something that you hate so much.
Can I get you on the AS400 so you can kill that?
They're boat anchors, they last forever. They're, what's the pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the purchase of the WatchGuard camera system for 30 of the sheriff's vehicles, an amount of 160,350 dollars, from the fiscal year 2021, general fund balance. You can tell it's late, I can't talk. General fund balance.
I have a motion, I have a motion to second any further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, I felt funny sitting up here eating, so thank you.
I have, when Atlantic Broadbent did the Newtown Road project, they actually followed a power line and left off 12 families that are now 5,000 feet.
Mr. Sealy, that's a great explanation. Can I call a question?
I'll make a motion, we use the CARES funds to connect homes on Newtown Road for broadband service.
Second.
I have a motion to second any discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number 13. Do we want, Mr. Fincham, you want to give us a brief explanation? And Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we deny the request for zoning text amendment for.
For, and let's do the amendment for Moho Village.
Moho Village.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second any further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have a dissension. Mr. Forehand?
It was not to do it, correct?
Right, was not to do it. Mr. Forehand is nay. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Agenda item 14, it's actually, goes to the registrars. Do we want an explanation, or we just going to go? We do it for a number, I think, a number of employees.
You know what I'm saying, do we want to give her a phone, as opposed to pay a stipend on her private phone? See, your personal phone, like my county phone, is on the website.
Right.
So everybody can get to my phone. I don't know if that person, that number would be on the website.
I don't have a druthers, I just saw it was in the board packet and didn't know what was quizzed.
Mr. Cully, do you have a preference?
Right, she's. We do have several employees, including me, that have a stipend. Just only have to carry one phone.
That is the problem.
And so that, I think the elector board sent a letter requesting that, and so we put them the amount in, and the only determination is, is you make or take it out of the current budget, or you're going to appropriate the additional $600 to her budget to cover it. That's CARES money, I'm sure that she can, that would. Might be. I mean, I would think she'd be able to cover $600, but I guess if she can't even be back, that'll be back on your agenda, but.
What's the pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that we go ahead and approve the stipend for the voter registrar's phone, and that it come from, which fund do you, where do you want the money to come from?
It would come from, if it's going to be appropriated to her budget, from the general fund balance.
From the general fund balance.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion to second any further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Mr. Cully?
We didn't get this in the packet we had hoped to get in, but we have a resounding request for, I think, 400,000 square foot industrial building in the Carmel Church area that has asked for an expedited public hearing.
I don't think that's ever going to be an issue for industrial site. Anybody have any issues with expedited hearing for a new commercial site? We'll take a motion for an. Do you need a motion, Mr. Cully, or is consent okay?
Yeah, no, planning needs a motion.
Planning, I'll.
Do you have a resounding number or anything? We haven't assigned a number, we just got it Friday, so that's why it's not in the packet.
How do we identify it? How do you want it identified, Mr. Fincham? You going to Gary School of Naming?
Expedited public hearing for the industrial prospect on Luther Glen Road.
Is this?
Yeah. Yeah, it's part of Carmel Church Station. It was 79 acres on the east side of 95, totally separate from the rest of the project. And we're looking at this prospect plus more industrial density.
Is this, Mr. Chairman, is this all part of that process that we should go through before we do expedited public hearings? I was just wondering, Mr. Underwood, had it talked about that? So, anyway, I'm fine with it.
All right, so I have a motion to do an expedited hearing for the property on.
East side of Interstate 95, formerly, or part of Carmel Church Station.
All right. Everybody, I have a motion, is a second, go along with that description. I have a motion to second any further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Cully, do you have anything on capital improvements?
Please say nobody has.
I turned into a pumpkin after midnight, but, yeah, whatever's in your packet is. So if you have any questions, certainly email us.
Mr. Sealy?
Mr. Black?
There's something that we failed to mention during the internet thing, and I talked to Mr. Thomas about it. When REC came to us at the last meeting, they were talking about discussing expanding broadband on their own. I was wondering, from this board, I think most of our residents, from the surveys that we've been getting back, most of our residents would really like to see that. Is there a way, because I think that vote's coming up sometime in September, is there a way we can get a resolution from this board saying that we would support their broadband expansion?
We could actually approve a resolution tonight and have staff write one in support of the REC looking to go into broadband. I mean, and just leave it at that and let Mr. Parton write a resolution, and I'll go
Oh, it's a public up there right now. They were here.
Is that a motion, Mr. Chair?
I believe that is a motion I've put out, if I can get.
Second.
I have a motion to do a resolution to REC in favor of them actually.
Secretly.
Supporting their idea of going into broadband.
Two years late.
Well, that's their business decision.
I know, but it's just frustrating. Other co-ops have been doing it for a couple of years now. I know the night quite as big as REC.
Right, they have not, and we're trying to encourage that decision. Mr. Parton, do you have any great ideas, I know it's midnight, on how to influence, we can talk about a resolution. I understand, but we're going to.
Yeah. You're working into the second day, man.
We can investigate that.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of sending a resolution to REC in favor of them going, getting into broadband, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Closing board comments, Mr. Forehand?
No, Jeff sucked up all the oxygen in the room, so I'll pass for that.
Mr. Black, closing board comments?
I'm good.
Mr. Underwood?
None.
Mrs. Long?
None.
Mr. Thomas? You can stay for that, and I have, I'll take that as none. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.